Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive and also access the meeting via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. Mrs. Beale, roll call.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Mr. Supalak.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Acceptance of documents and approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Going right into cases, I'll take them, I think we're taking them as they are itemized on the agenda already. We're starting with Baltimore Corner Restaurant, Valentina's, case number 21-017-MPR, Minor Project Review. Nicole? Forgive me. This application is a request for exterior and site modifications to accommodate a restaurant tenant, including storefront alterations, an enclosed and covered patio, and associated design details located within Bridge Park, Block B, Zoned Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood District. The site is southeast of the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue with Riverside Drive.
Great. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval this evening of a minor project review for Valentina's restaurant, which is located within the Bridge Park Development on the east side of Riverside Drive. This site is located at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Riverside Drive, within Building B2, also referred to as the Baltimore Building. Provided on the screen are images of the existing tenant space, which you'll see here is the first-story tenant space at the intersection. A bit of history regarding the original development of Bridge Park Block B. This block was originally approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2015. At that time, a shopping corridor was required to be designated. Shopping quarters are intended to provide for continuous pedestrian activity. Shopping quarters have a minimum required width of 12 feet. You'll see the building highlighted here in yellow, noting that the shopping corridor extends along the Riverside Drive frontage, as well as the Bridge Park Avenue frontage. A waiver to the shopping corridor requirement is requested along Riverside Drive. Additionally, at the time of development in 2015, the applicant was required to provide open space. The open space was designated both on the block of development, as well as within Riverside Crossing Park. You'll see on the screen there was a condition regarding the BPZ1 open space, shown in bright green, and that is the applicant was required to continue to work with the city and the Dublin Arts Council to develop the final elements for this pocket plaza, which is located at the terminal vista of the pedestrian bridge. This condition has yet to be implemented. Some additional development history, as well as staff's pocket plaza recommendation. Shown on your screen is the 2015 pocket plaza design that was conceptualized for this location. You'll notice the variety of paving materials, as well as, highlighted in pink and blue, the building column, as well as an area identified as an artwork opportunity location. So with this, staff is recommending that the pocket plaza design and tenant space designs be separated. This is based on coordination between the city, the Dublin Arts Council, and Crawford Hoing, that has occurred since the September 30th meeting. In conversations with the executive director, David Gion, he is recommending that these two projects be uncoupled, in order to facilitate a design process between the property owner Crawford Hoing, as well as the Dublin Arts Council, with consideration from the city to transform this space into a place, and notes that there are opportunities for place making, as well as artistic elements. So staff is conditioning that the design for this pocket plaza area be finalized no later than March 31st of 2022, and that the final design be implemented no later than October 1st of 2022. Based on this timeframe, the 2015 condition would be required to be implemented in not more than one calendar year. So a bit of case history, as the commission, I'm sure, recalls, this application has been before you numerous times between April and September of this year, originating at the administrative review team level. Since your last review in September, the applicant has made updates, primarily to the pocket plaza design, with the remainder of the storefront tenant modifications being consistent. As staff is recommending the withdraw of all pocket plaza design elements, those will not be highlighted as part of this presentation. So as a reminder, the site plan is shown on your screen. The right-of-way line is highlighted in yellow. There are a number of elements that are being proposed here. The light blue identifies the entrance canopy, accessible along Bridge Park Avenue, and that shopping corridor, where a width of 12 feet is able to be maintained. Identified in green is the pocket plaza. Identified in orange is the proposed seat wall, that staff is recommending be withdrawn, and the pier remain as-is, so that the design can be fully vetted. The areas identified in red are the encroachments for the enclosed patio space. The enclosed patio space encroaches approximately 6 feet within the Riverside Drive right-of-way, and approximately 5 feet within the pocket plaza, reducing the pocket plaza by a total of 150 square feet. This reduction is minimal, and provides for a clear area of 3 feet of circulation around the pier, provided that the seat wall is removed. Identified in pink is the covered patio portion, which also encroaches 6 feet within the right-of-way. In order to accommodate this consistent 6-foot encroachment, and to maintain 8 feet of clear distance along Riverside Drive, the applicant is proposing to modify the streetscape planters by a variable width of 2 feet 4 inches, to 0 feet at the southernmost end, in order to accommodate additional pedestrian circulation. So with that, as mentioned, the tenant modifications are consistent with the previous review. The prominent front entry, along Bridge Park Avenue, with a statement trellis, as well as planter boxes, a revolving door, an awning balance, and accented with marquee lighting. The enclosed patio is depicted here, along Riverside Drive, incorporating operable windows, as well as a fixed awning over a structure. And finally, the covered patio extends the design along Riverside Drive, providing a unique element visible from the Dublin Link Pedestrian Bridge. The furniture selections, as well as lighting selections, remain consistent with the September review, as well as many of the proposed details. In review of the two requested waivers, staff is recommending approval to both, identifying that these are critical to activate the streetscape in a high-quality manner, and to facilitate intentional place making that blurs the line between public and private spaces, consistent with the goals and objectives of the Bridge Street District. Staff is also recommending approval of the minor project review with eight conditions. The two conditions highlighted in green are new to this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and were previously detailed in the slides. Conditions 3 through 8 remain unaddressed from the October review, and will be further coordinated through the building permit. With that, the applicant team is here this evening, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nicole. Question for staff?
Nikki, could you walk us through the process of the decoupling? What happens to the application, to the applicant's ability to proceed, and then what happens when this decoupling with the Arts Council comes back? Is it a yea or nay at that point? See where I'm going, whether they converge, whether they diverge?
Yeah, and absolutely fair question. This has been a complex process in a very pivotal location. So the applicant with approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening would be able to proceed with their tenant modifications. So those are the tenant modifications, storefront, as well as the encroachment into the Riverside Drive right-of-way, and the proposed 150-square-foot encroachment into the pocket plaza. The pocket plaza is proposed to remain unchanged, which would allow Crawford Hoing, the city, and the Dublin Arts Council to actually go through a proper design process, to vision the future of this area within the next six months, in a manner that would be much more public than any design we've seen that was more related to the tenant. And so through vetting that design, staff would have the ability to approve that design, at which point it would be implemented. And then, members of the commission have also requested that it be brought back for informational purposes.
So it's totally a dual track, and regardless of the outcome of the public plaza discussion recommendations, the applicant could proceed?
Correct, which is consistent with how tenant space modifications work in the rest of Bridge Park.
Thank you.
Forgive me, didn't mean to jump into questions prior to your presentation. I think that one probably was the one we really needed to understand and vet, though. Applicant presentation. Name and address, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. Randy Roberti, Design Collective Architecture, 151 East Nationwide Boulevard. Nikki, thanks for the introduction and the recap. The owner agrees with all conditions presented by staff, so we're in agreement with those items, the eight items. And given the thorough discussion that's occurred to this point on this project, there's not really much additional presentation required. So we would turn it back over to you for any questions or additional discussion.
Thank you, Randy. Additional questions? Move on to discussion? Do we have any public comment?
We've not received any public comment.
Anyone wish to comment? All right, discussion. Go ahead.
For staff, and it's probably my, we're actually recommending two waivers. If this restaurant ceases to be what it is, do those waivers stay with the next person? I assume they do, right?
From a city perspective, those waiver approvals would be retained, unless the tenant space was altered in any way. So if a new tenant were to come forward and wanted to make alterations, those waivers would need to be reconsidered in conjunction with their proposal. However, say, a new restaurant comes in and needs to make no alterations at all, which is very unlikely, right? Everyone has their brand standard, then those waivers would stand, as the physical infrastructure would be in place.
So if they were ever to make alterations in the elevation of the restaurant, then the waivers would be reconsidered then?
Correct.
Okay.
Warren, is your concern that, these waivers are specific to this design, is your concern that these waivers would allow future design changes?
Future design come in, which has happened before in previous cases. That the waiver was there, the next guy comes in and does something not nearly as dramatic, but the waiver stayed, and that's what I was concerned about. But you're saying that, without a doubt, if there's any alterations in the property, then the waivers are reconsidered?
That's correct.
Additional questions? Discussion? Mr. Way?
Firstly, I want to commend staff for uncoupling the pocket plaza from everything else. I think that was the absolutely right thing to do, and allow that process to go on by itself. I have been very consistent through all these reviews, that I do not support reducing the width of the key shopping walkway, and I still believe that, that I think it needs to be the 12 feet, and I don't think any alteration of that should be acceptable.
You just turned your mic off.
Thank you. The expansion as it's laid out, is that the city's request to get it to eight, or the applicant's adjustment? And maybe the better question is to answer Mr. Way's commentary. I don't know that it necessarily precludes the expansion by the applicant. Are you seeking 12 out there?
I think the original, I mean, the proposal is to expand the restaurant out into the public right-of-way, and to move the planter over 2 feet to accommodate a minimum of 8-something feet, which is far less than 12 feet. And I believe that 12 feet is necessary in this particular area of Bridge Park, and the circulation that happens along the street, and the connections to the hotel and other uses. And, you know, walking around Bridge Park in historic Dublin, and watching people struggle getting by on sidewalks, you know, that are 6 feet and 8 feet, and with people with strollers and kids, and I think 12 feet is absolutely appropriate and necessary dimension that was established when the project was, when all the development guidelines were developed. And I think it was a good standard, and I think I support that standard, and I don't want to see that it reduced in this particular area.
Forgive me. Nicole, do you happen to know, so those beds there are pretty generous. Are there other areas where the beds are far less generous?
Yep. Sorry, yes, there are. So immediately north of the intersection of Riverside Drive and Bridge Park Avenue, the street section changes, so you actually have on-street parking, which provides that buffer from Riverside Drive, and then planter beds that are significantly narrower in width. The condition south of Bridge Park Avenue includes no on-street parking due to the volume of traffic and speeds coming out of the roundabout, and then includes the more generous planter, which is approximately 12 feet in width.
And what significance is it to us if we pinch that planter more? We're giving, in this adjustment, we're giving back, we're losing 2'4" out of the planter, but we still have 13'8" in those planters. Is there a happy medium here? Mr. Way?
Sorry.
I was just going to say, my professional opinion is that the size of those planters was done to allow for the thriving of the landscape within it, and when you start to reduce that dimension, and the area that you have for plants to get air and water, it starts to impact the plant. So I would not, that's why I'm not in favor of reducing it, because I think you need that dimension to really encourage that landscape to grow and thrive.
Yeah?
Thank you. First, on the question regarding the artificial vegetation above, was there a discussion on, in lieu of that, what you guys might do? I mean, it makes it look very attractive in the photos. I mean, it's part of that ambiance, but I agree that it would be a nuisance for nesting and birds and so forth. That's true. But what might you do in lieu of that?
Staff has recommended removal, so at this time, it would be removing that from the, from the.
Just remove it?
Yeah.
Okay. On the issue of the planters and the walkway, you know, I walk down there often at different hours, day and night, and it seems to me that the predominant pedestrian flow, at least at this point in time, happens to be east and west, and to the north, with a lot of the other shops in those other areas, and with only a few buildings to the south, you know, the hotels and so forth. It seems like, you know, there's not as much shopping traffic, maybe. I don't know if that's a fair, necessary statement, but I don't think we'd be losing the ability for flow from the pedestrians by giving a little bit off of these planters. And I think that it's really an important corner, certainly, at that head of the bridge, but I think that, all things said, that I'd be willing to grant that waiver. Thank you.
Jane?
I appreciate the conversation about the width of the sidewalk. I tend to agree that that sidewalk doesn't bring a lot of energy, a lot of pedestrian activity from the south. The code allows 6-foot encroachment into a sidewalk for patio use. So this would be allowed under code, is that correct, Nikki? If one were to ask for a 6-foot encroachment with the use of patios into the right-of-way. It's allowed in Bridge Park.
It's allowed in Bridge Park due to the development agreement.
Right.
Entered into by the developer and city council.
Right. Now, the difference here is that this is a building footprint, and I get that. But it is an indoor/outdoor living space, and the encroachment is 6 foot all the way along the distance. So the way I look at this is, one, I also agree that it should be separated from the pocket plaza, as it was intended to be in the first place. It wasn't done, but it needs to get done now, and it will get done this way. And it'll get done in a manner that I think we can look at the design coming from that coordination as a really healthy and a good way to try to come up with some interesting place making elements. And I would recommend that when that design is finished, it comes back to P and Z, not as a condition, but to learn, for us to learn, some of the more unique ways that we can begin to create place making in conjunction with the Arts Council and Crawford Hoing. So I think that's good for us. When this first started out, there was a request to eliminate the pocket plaza, and of course, planning and zoning didn't want to do that. And through these conversations, we've gotten a really elevated design, and the opportunity to work with the Arts Council in creating a more interesting pocket plaza. So I am okay with allowing this encroachment, because it's a gateway, because the design is elevated and it deserves it. The pocket plaza is going to get a much more extensive and professional development. The design is innovative, and I think it's going to create some activation of space. I also worry about setting a precedent. If it's really to a point where it's bad, maybe the planter could be shortened, because we're only talking a few tables there at the corner. I don't think we need to go there. I think, I think the design, what we're getting in return for the reduction in space, is, I think, an equitable compromise. I also think that the artificial greenery enhances it, and in trying to understand where architects use artificial greenery, they use them in New York, they use them in rooftop gardens, they use them in many places, and they say they're easier to take care of, because you can hose them down. So I think it adds to the kind of character that you're trying to create on the corner with this Italian feel. And I think once you add the artwork, that greenery that will be present all year long is kind of a, I like it. So, and I think there's a reason for it, because it's used in other applications, not just because I like it. And then I just have one more question on this window film that's on the others, exactly where this window film is, and what does it look like, and is it just black window film?
So staff is conditioning that additional details be provided.
Okay.
But this is along the east elevation, which is Long Shore Street.
Right.
And this provides the service entrance to this tenant space. So they're installing a 42-inch wide door, as well as providing, really just screening of back-of-house items.
Right.
Any reduction in transparency to a single elevation requires that the applicant provide us those calculations, demonstrating that the minimum code requirement is still met. So that is why we have the condition. And I'm happy to pull up a plan for you, if you'd like to see it.
The reason I ask that is because, you know, I know we're all about transparency, but in some cases, especially in trying to screen service areas, you don't want to look into them. But there are opportunities there to use some sort of a decorative screen element that is kind of fun, and has an image on it, or creates a little conversation, or whatever. So I guess I'm just saying that when you go to take a look at this, I would like to see that be something more than just, you know, cover glass, that it actually, you know, has something interesting. If you're going to cover a window, let's put something there in its place that's kind of fun to look at as you go down the street. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I think my colleagues have said it all. I'm never crazy about reducing the sidewalk space, but as my colleague said, that it's a trade-off, and it's okay. I actually was not in favor of the artificial plants before, but the last week or so I've walked around, I think if it's well-maintained and replaced, and I think that Crawford Hoing's reputation in that area is probably okay. So I can settle for that. What I've noticed, I spent some time looking at it in other areas of town, and if it's there a long time, it fades out, and it looks bad. So if it's, I assume it'll be well-maintained and so on. The other thing I'm a little uncomfortable with is, we have no idea what the artwork is going to be in the space, and I'm sure there's going to be a budget for that artwork, okay? I can't imagine that you're going to say carte blanche to the Arts Council. So I'd like to, would that be coming back to us for approval? It doesn't seem like it would, from what I've read.
So the proposal is for it not to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that is really just to facilitate the design process in the most creative and flexible manner possible, and also to expedite the design and implementation of that space, as it seems really, really critical, that by the time that the tenant would open, that this space be a place.
He brings up a good point, as to the expectations of the pocket plaza and budget. You do bring up a good point.
Yeah, and I think they're going to have a budget, and that oftentimes restricts the creativity of the, and I've seen in other parts of the city where the creativity of the, and I've seen in other parts of the city where they said, oh, you're going to put a beautiful piece of artwork there, and I'm not going to mention where, but, and it turned out to be very disappointing, more of a sign than artwork. So, is there any way, is there any way that that can be approved or have some oversight on that?
Yeah, so I think there'll definitely be a lot of oversight, right? We have three entities coordinating heavily on that. The condition from 2015 did not require the final Pocket Plaza design solution to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we're really just extending that to 2021. And I will personally guarantee you, Warren, that there will not be a sign in the plaza.
So, we can make that a condition?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'd have to condition a lot of things that can't go in the plaza.
Yeah. Well, I think it'd be another, if anybody's against that, I'm fine, but I just, I understand what they're going through. There's going to be a budget, and sometimes people's expectations don't fit within that budget. And I think that our expectations are pretty high for that plaza, okay? And that's why we're giving in on the waivers and so on. And so, I'd like to see it and be able to approve it or...
Nicole, clarify, right? I mean, we, don't get me wrong, we all continued this conversation in a certain way, but we're still talking, I guess I'm going to, even that conversation, Valentina's the tenant, that conversation is occurring with Crawford-Hoyne.
That's correct. So, I guess just for some perspective, say we were, this was the first day that Valentina's had ever introduced themselves to the city, and they had come in with a proposal that was not influencing the open space at all. We would never be having this conversation. It really has been an iterative progression backwards from wanting to occupy the Pocket Plaza with effectively a building addition to today effectively preserving the Pocket Plaza and allowing us to fulfill the 2015 condition.
To wit, any sort of stipulations about budget or otherwise are not associated with this applicant?
That's correct.
Okay. Lance?
I'll pick up on that same theme because I'm either confused, troubled, or both. Will the tenant, will the applicant/tenant be providing any funds for the construction of the plaza?
I would have to defer to the applicant as well as the property owner. I don't know if that's something that they've discussed as part of their lease agreement, but I can tell you monies directly to the city are not being provided, as this is a private open space.
Okay, so the city, here's my issue. I'm all about alignment of interests, and here's how we get alignment of interest by some quid pro quos on variances, et cetera, waivers. They want to open a restaurant. They want the restaurant to look inviting, so there's an incentive to cooperate, in quotes, with the Pocket Plaza. However, decoupling their authorization from responsibility for the Pocket Plaza doesn't give them quite the same incentive. It's not, as I understand, it's not a condition. So, Pocket Plaza goes down its own path. Wherever that leads won't impact the applicant's ability to build, occupy, conduct business, et cetera, other than maybe not having an optimal scene outside, which, and if that's all we're, if that's what we're hanging our hats on, that, yeah, they're going to cooperate because it's in their best interest to attract clientele, okay, but I just want, I want to know that that's the case, and that's all that's the case, and it's not unless you contribute X or unless we all agree to Y, you can't proceed. And my understanding is, it is not the latter. It's the former, they're off and running. And I'm not trying to be pejorative, I'm not taking any point of view other than just trying to be factual. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, but they're, decoupling means decoupling. They're just off and running.
Yes.
Go ahead, build your restaurant, looks great, here's the waivers. Now, we, and I'm still fuzzy, we want your input. Do we want their money for the Pocket Plaza? We want their input? Do we want their approval? Do they get a veto? Do we care about their involvement at all? And that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, so I think to answer all of those questions, we'll have to defer to Crawford-Hoyne to better understand what their lease agreement is and what those contribution distributions look like. I will say that the mechanism to enforce the condition regarding the timeframe is, should the property owner, Crawford-Hoyne, not hit any of those time commitments, either the first one or the second one, that becomes a violation that can then be enforced through code compliance.
Against Crawford-Hoyne, not the other?
Against Crawford-Hoyne.
Okay, so somebody is responsible?
Yes, so we can take legal action.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you.
Can I ask one thing? So, I think it was really well said, Lance. I was thinking all those things, but as, I think they've done a fabulous job, I think they're a great team, but once they, as Lance said, go for it, and it's a separate thing, we haven't heard who's going to be participating in the financing of this thing and what motivation they're going to have to make this a spectacular thing that we all envision, okay? And if I was the developer, I would maybe lose interest a little bit in that artwork or whatever, and I would set a firm budget, and that would be it. And so, I think that we have lost, when they were coupled together, there was a lot more motivation. So, that's what I want to hear. How is it going to be financed? Who's going to do it? And what motivation do they have to make it spectacular?
Right. And so, I think in the, right, the initial proposal of this application, there was that critical nexus between these two topics. As the application has changed over time, there is no longer that nexus, and so we're simply enforcing or enacting a condition from 2015. Regarding, you know, how this will be financed or funded, we would have to defer to Crawford-Hoyne to address that item.
And I would just say that in the initial condition from 2015, there were no particular financial criteria set out there either.
I understand that.
That seems like, thank you. Thanks. So, a couple of different things to talk about. I was there in 2015, 2013, and 2012 when we started this project, and can touch on a couple of things that I think were shouted in mystery, maybe if it helps a little bit tonight. Yes, the first, first thing is taking us back to the encroachment of the sidewalk into the planters, for example. I can tell you, we initially had on-street parking on Riverside Drive coming out of the roundabout, as you headed north towards Murfield, right, on Riverside Drive. And at that point, the planters were all much narrower. It was decided due to engineering input that it was not safe for cars exiting the roundabout to have to contend with people who are trying to parallel park. And I think after the fact, we all realized that that was really, really wise of them because people exiting the roundabout are a little unpredictable. So, as a result of that, suddenly, the sidewalk gained back eight or nine feet, which it did not previously have. That eight or nine feet needed to go somewhere, and it was absorbed into the planters. That's why you see planters that are narrower to the north versus shallow, you know, versus wider to the south of Bridge Park Avenue, just purely a result of that. I don't disagree with Kim. You know, obviously, the wider, the planters, the better for the health and wellness of the plants. But, and I would jump to that same conclusion, I would be led to that too if I hadn't lived it and breathed it for a while. So, I would think that if there's any amount of encroachment that wants to happen into that planter in order to facilitate a wider open space that Kim is asking for, I think that that would certainly be possible, at least looking at the planters to the north of Bridge Park Avenue and shrinking up that much and adding all that space to the public walk space. So, that was one point I wanted to make. Point two quickly is that we had anticipated to work with Cameron Mitchell on paying for the improvements, all the, and the pretty pictures that you saw in that open space, right? So, now, that's been forced to be backed out. We have still set those dollars aside, which is a $25,000 allowance for public art to go into that space. So, we've removed the cost that we have had attributed to the CMR project, and we've moved it over to, as a placeholder for this public art. That is a budget that we have that we would be working to. It's a very small space. I would hope $25,000 would be enough to do a lot of damage. We'd certainly be willing to agree and go on the record to that tonight, to say that that's a budget that we will work to, to spend that. And if the city really wants to put something incredible there, you know, above and beyond that, let's say it wants to be a bronze statue of somebody, for example, right? So, that's fine, we would be more than willing to contribute toward that and then come up with something really, really spectacular. But we, when we're developing this to a very high level for Cameron Mitchell, for them to have their restaurant and their outdoor seating space, that's how much we were spending. Now, it's public. We'll be investing just as much in the public as we would be into the private. So, we feel that that's adequate, and hopefully you guys will agree.
Go ahead.
What we're saying, and it's fine, just for matter of clarity, the decoupling, maybe it shouldn't have ever been coupled, but the applicant, in my opinion, should be able to proceed on the merits without reference to the Pocket Plaza. The whole issue that was raised and that I also raised as to what happens if there, there's just an agreement to agree with respect to the Pocket Plaza, and now it's Crawford-Hoyne and the city, and they can't agree, that shouldn't influence this application, and that's what we're saying. And that's fine, I approve of that. And then, whether we live to fight another day, need to fight another day, or whether there's another fight on the Pocket Plaza, we can deal with that. It just happened to come up in a circuitous way here. It's, it is a little, that process sounds a little muddy, but we can deal with that. If we, if it comes back to us, we'll have an opportunity to review it. So, I'm fine. Let's, in my opinion, let's appropriately decouple them in every sense of the word.
Okay, I have another question of clarity, okay? What, I'm sure they'll spend as much money as it needs to make it proper, okay? That's not a problem. Who's responsible for this piece of artwork? Certainly not the Dublin Art Council. They'll help them design it or come up with ideas and so on, but who's, when they do come back, who's going to be sitting out there? Who's responsible? If we say this thing is really inferior, okay, it's not acceptable, who's the responsible person? Is it Crawford-Hoyne? Is it Cameron Mitchell? Is it the city? Who is it?
So, I think the responsible person is the artist or placemaker that is engaged in creating the space, right? We're trying to provide enough latitude for creativity and to not regulate engaging public places, which I think is maybe a little bit uncomfortable, but I think ultimately in the end will elicit the type of place that everyone really wants to visit and will highlight this corner as well as this tenant space. And so, with these conditions and with this application as presented, specifically the timetable and then the parties at the table, it will absolutely be executed to the expectations of the commission and the City of Dublin.
Okay, so it's the Art Council that's going to be responsible? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, Crawford-Hoyne, as the property owner of the property, is responsible for implementing the condition. The city is responsible for enforcing the condition, and the Dublin Arts Council is responsible for facilitating creative conversations around placemaking. And whomever or whatever is identified to activate that space will be the result of all parties executing their task.
Okay. This, I'm going to say it a little bit differently. When Crawford-Hoyne built this building, we all, right, this room, the city, Crawford-Hoyne agreed, here's going to be open space parts of this block, right? With some ready recognition that, that one of them would wait until sort of there was tenant in that space and a better understanding of it, right? It's, i.e., it's always been Crawford-Hoyne's responsibility. That part, that portion of the project has always been, because it was previously proved in...
Yes.
Right. This has always been Crawford-Hoyne's responsibility.
Got it.
Had it not been, had the initial proposal for this tenant space not included the elimination or partial elimination of the Pocket Plaza, the Pocket Plaza would never have been, you know, a glint in the eye of the commission. And it would have been developed as, as being proposed with this decoupling. Really, even decoupling isn't probably the right way to even think about it. It's just the application is now limited to the scope of tenant improvements in the building and not in the open space. And the open space will proceed as it would have before.
Got it. Thoroughly noted.
I guess, not to beat a dead horse, but when we were developing the code for the thing, the consultant said, here are your pocket parks, don't let them pick away at those, okay? Because this is the minimum, okay? And so, we're doing it because we've been promised this spectacular artwork that offsets that sacrifice of making the walks narrower and all those things. So, is there a way that when the artist is picked and the plan is presented, okay, that that has to come back to us to see what they're going to do before they do it? I don't want to be in a position that the artwork's there and it's really disappointing. You see what I'm saying? Because I think that's the only reason I'm voting for the waivers is because I think overall it's going to be spectacular. I have a lot of faith in this team. And so, I think that's, you're coming off the bridge. I walked that bridge today. I looked at the space, and it's really the focal point of Bridge Street. I mean, that's where people walk across. Why, sorry, today, this is a weekday. I saw people walking back and forth, or they parked on the other side, they're coming across, you know? I mean, so, so it's a real focal point. So, I think that's, it's a real important space, and I don't want people to say, well, you know, we blew it. There's a little girl with a fountain that, you know, like we have downtown, okay? So, I want something that people go, wow, and they come and take pictures of it, you know? So...
Nikki, can I ask, I'm going to try to follow up on this. We played this hypothetical, had this application ever occurred, and there was this independent development of the Pocket Plaza, what would be the review process? We're going to use uncoupled because I can't think of a better way, or decoupled, but if it were independent all along, would it come, would it, in its natural course, come back to this commission or not?
No, because the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this Pocket Plaza in 2015.
Then I would say we have no authority to go back because the application is the application, and it's the four corners of those documents that all we have authority to determine now. And the Pocket Plaza is not within our authority. So, you get to sit in the audience like everybody else and say, I like it or don't like it, but you can't, I mean, I'll defer to that. I don't think, you know, I don't think we have the authority to condition anything about that Pocket Plaza from this diocese.
However, it got connected when we made the concessions to reduce the space and let him pull the building out and do all those things.
Well, you can, you can decide not to do that.
We can. We can say, we're not going to do it, and we'll take care of the pocket park, but I don't think they want to do that after all this.
Right.
And we certainly don't want to do it. We want to make space. So, I just think that, that, I think that's a big part of the application. It's become a part of the application simply because we made concessions because of the promises to make that a spectacular entrance there. So, I'd like to solve the problem. I think your point's well-taken, but I think under this circumstance, we're giving way of... giving waivers, we're, we're letting them, that, that's going to be a dominant, dominant place and their entrance to that restaurant's going to be dominant too. And so I think that, 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 that piece of land we've got left there, we, we've, we're picking it, picking at it. And I think that, you know, so what can we do?
Are we at this point encroaching on the Pocket Plaza space? The design?
Yes, by 150 square feet.
See? That's why.
May I just make a quick comment? I agree with Lance. This was been decided back in 2015 and I think that one of the concerns is, it didn't get finished. There's an element of trust and cooperation here that will happen. I would like to see the design come back, not as a condition, but just to understand that, one, you're doing it, now you're doing it. Now Crawford-Hoing is, is going to complete it. The, obviously the tenant wants to see a beautiful something right in his front door. It's not going to be ugly, I don't imagine. And I also think it's an opportunity for us to learn how we can start to create spaces that are places with utilizing the design, uh, collaboration with the Arts Council. So I wouldn't condition it, but I certainly agree that I think it should just come back to us to see it so that we can grow in the process of understanding how we can create better placemaking spaces. So I'm, I agree. I don't, I don't think we have the ability now. If we're going to separate it, separate it. Tenant needs to go on. He's satisfied. They have satisfied many of the things we've asked. We're going to move in a direction of a leap of faith that this is going to be right because we have...
The trust.
We have the trust and we have a good setup to do so. So that's where I am.
I'll go on record saying that's a good compromise.
Okay.
Is, I, I'll, I would go on record saying, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as it's clearly stated that it's, as an educational, you know, as part of our last agenda item, you know, for group education, the parties are going to come back and give us, show us a deck about this. Because we, because I'm concerned that we're, otherwise we're attempting to backdoor into authority that we don't have.
I, I don't know that, how about this? I don't know that we need to condition the way...
That's right.
Anything, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we are, we are asking Crawford-Hoing to do this out of good graces. And of course, we have a, we happen to have a good working relationship, so we have, I think there's faith that, you know what I mean, Nelson, that you guys would participate with us on this type of stuff. I, I will say, I think we exposed a gap, right? Like this is a gap, um, which we need to solve. And I don't know what the, the answer is, you know, we'll, we'll, Steph can potentially take that away. It might be a sort of code adjustment, I suppose, but this is, this is a gap if we have pocket parks being sort of released into the wild without, without participating in their design, in their design, right? Like, um, that, that I think is what we've, what we've unearthed here, more so than anything else.
I'd comment on one thing. It, it will be a public process with David Gillen. I think everyone on the board knows David, knows the Arts Council. You can pick up the phone, call him and say, this is what I'd love to see. And if it's a one-on-one meeting with David, uh, just to, to talk to him about what you'd like to see, he's, you know, his door is wide open. It's not a, a situation where he may not be able to reach out to an elected official or something. He's out there to serve the community and to serve this commission and every, every citizen. So it'll be a public process, it should be a fun process. And we're, yeah, we're excited about getting it done. It's, uh, something that we, we honestly just forgot about and it, I think as you see everything else that's been going on there at Bridge Park, if you have full transparency, sometimes some things get lost in the shuffle when you're focused on trying to build $500 million worth of stuff. That was the case here. Should be a great opportunity to improve the, the front door of Bridge Park. No one, yeah, and I think Jane touched on it, nobody really cares more about that than, than the people who are going to be inhabiting the restaurant right behind it and the people who, you know, are, are the major private developers of the project right next to it too. So all our interests are totally aligned, but let's do it. All right.
I entirely agree with you. I mean, we, we all have a, a great deal of invested interest in, in that corner, is what it comes down to.
Are we done with that subject? Can I just?
Go ahead.
I just have some clarifications that have, as part of the discussion. So Ms. Fox, you said that we're allowed by code to do six-foot encroachment into, I can't, at some point, can you tell me where that is in the code because I can't find it?
Yeah.
I have to ask Nikki.
Yeah, so it's not in the zoning code. Bridge Park has a specific development agreement that City Council executed with them to accommodate certain things that aren't permitted elsewhere. And encroaching within the right-of-way for certain very specific things, one of which is outdoor dining. However, in areas of conflict, right, between a code requirement and a development agreement allowance, right, the code, um, rises to the top. And so that's why the waiver is requested, even though Council always contemplated that this type of thing would interplay in Bridge Park.
So the clarification, you said it's for patio space. So part of what's being encroached here is not patio space, it's an enclosed building. Is that correct? So does it still meet that criteria?
Yeah, in conversations with the Law Director's Office, because this is something we have very much debated, as the applicant team and property owner can attest to. The Law Director has determined that the, um, enclosed portion is an enclosed patio due to the indoor/outdoor element that it presents compared to an actual structure.
So it's not a permanent structure?
In the Law Director's determination.
Okay. Um, and then I wanted to make the point that there's another tenant to the south, Z Kachina, who has an outdoor space that's within the building line. Does this set the precedent that they would come to us then and ask for an encroachment into the right-of-way?
I, I would just say that in terms of talking about precedent, um, nothing prevents them under any circumstance from coming to planning into this commission with a minor project for your review. That could include a waiver of, of that clear space area. I wouldn't call this a binding precedent on that because we do, of course, have different geographic conditions there, different, um, traffic conditions there, being closer to the roundabout, for example, um, and also closer to the hotel. So, you know, perhaps somebody would, but I would not call this, you know, on all fours and determinative of any future requests from the other tenants.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there, just having been out there and observed that, that's the whole space. And to Mr. Yoder's comment about the width of the planter, and I appreciate your sensitivity to it, my observations being out there is that that planter always wanted to be bigger because it doesn't have the parking and it's, it's kind of at that place where you're coming through the roundabout and people are either slowing down or they're actually picking up speed and that to have that bigger buffer was really something that was necessary. Because once you get to the on-street parking, it then tends to slow people down. So again, I was appreciating those planters being wide because it provided that nice big buffer that you need at that kind of gateway coming into the, um, this area. So I just wanted to make that, that comment. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I hope I'll be brief. Um, I'm not necessarily about this, I'm not necessarily averse to the sidewalk reduction. I'm not actually averse to even the planter being reduced more than it is if we, if somehow collectively we believe the sidewalk had to be bigger. There's a value judgment there and there is, I don't know, there's 20-some feet between the two of them and then a little bit more of paving on the, on the street side. So there's a good amount of distance. I, I, it's just a, a balance in, in all that. So I'm not averse, averse to that first and foremost. I am on board with decoupling. Again, we, we sort of collectively slow walked ourselves here by, you know, encroaching on it and designing into it and then trying to reduce out of it. I am excited about the Arts Council process and understanding how we collectively, all three of us, um, start to work together to really, really do some great things. We all have invested interest in all that. The artificial plants, so we've been back and forth collectively, right? There's a recommendation currently that the, that they are, what's this? Steph clearly has concerns that perhaps there'll be a bird problem, perhaps there'll be a deterioration problem, perhaps there'll be a discoloration problem. I don't believe those are any, anything that either Crawford-Hoing or Cameron Mitchell's would put up with if they started to go. I wonder if we, what we do is we take a different kind of chance and we polish that condition to allow it pending, I don't know, something about maintenance. I don't know what the language is, but, right, the ability to revisit it later should it prove to be a problem. Of course, there's other parts of the code that kind of deal with that stuff regardless. Um, forgive me, I'm, I'm trying to draw it back up now, it just disappeared on me. Window film will, you guys will work that out. Um, all right. So, so the big, unless I'm wrong, the big sort of, the only real sort of disagreement, I think, that we have at this point is about the waiver on the sidewalk side. Can I get a temperature check on, are we good with eight, eight feet? Are we not good with eight feet? And it is written as a minimum of eight foot two, which, which doesn't say anything about the planter and allows, as it's getting potentially laid out, um, the opportunity to adjust it to be a little bit larger and steal another foot from the planter if, if need be. It's within our, within the ability of the process to, to manage that.
Mark, the other thing, I did have one other thing. I just wanted to say that the rendering that shows up on this one, that is not inaccurate of what an eight foot sign, what will be. That looks more like it's 12 feet. I'm saying, so don't rely on that rendering to give you an opinion of what it's going to look like.
Point well, point well made. With that, are we at a point where we can, we...
Make a motion to approve the waiver.
Can we remove three? Applicant eliminate the artificial plant?
Or adjust three?
Whatever staff recommends, but I think they should be left. I would like to see us get a consensus on that.
That's a, that's a good point. So if we, if we augment that, how might, how might you best, how might be appropriate to handle that one?
Yeah, I mean, I, we have done it both ways before. I mean, if the commission is comfortable, then we could easily eliminate the condition. Otherwise, it can be altered, um, to require that should, um, the city determine at any point that the maintenance of the artificial greenery be less than adequate as visually assessed from the right-of-way, that they would be required to remove it and/or come before, remove and replace it and/or come before the Planning and Zoning Commission to, um, identify a suitable alternative.
Temperature check?
I, I would not approve any artificial greenery, so that's my opinion. So I wouldn't, I would support any artificial greenery. So whatever the language needs to be, that, again, to prevent that from happening, that would be my preference. But is my understanding that a landscape plan had to come back with clarifications on what was artificial, what was real, and then that was when we had the chance to?
So the landscape plan is a required condition. It's a item that staff would review. So what staff is saying is we are accepting of, um, artificial plant material in an extremely limited capacity, um, particularly or specifically rather, on the main entrance to the building. And then all of the other more tactile items would need to be, um, real plants. And then we had initially identified that the artificial greenery along the extent of the awning, uh, would be an opportunity to reduce that given its high visibility from Riverside Drive and Riverside Crossing Park.
So the way you just articulated about, um, I guess, uh, the artificial plants only in very limited portions, isn't necessarily the way it's written here. I mean, I, I think, I think if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, I think the, the council or the commission is comfortable with plants, artificial plants potentially at the top.
I am.
Provided we have some measure of maintenance control?
Just as a clarification, all vegetation that's not above the awning is real. Better way to phrase that, the only artificial vegetation is on the awning.
None of it is imaginary.
Which, which would be nice not to have.
And, and in the canopy of the entrance.
Yes, I was considering that, the part of the canopy too, but you're correct.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
So Nicole, forgive me, that, that condition number three, can we just see that? And then I'd suppose the question is, do we eliminate it or do we, do we adjust it?
Yeah, so I'm presently working to adjust it. I would recommend that we propose an adjustment, um, right? Conditions are the exceptions, not the allowance to do something. So we can, um, propose an adjusted language and if anyone is not in agreement with the conditions set forth, they could, uh, vote for disapproval of the application, um, in regards to landscaping.
I think condition five has that in there for the, the artificial vegetation, so I think that would include that. If you just eliminate three and then it'd be up to staff to monitor if it's maintained appropriately and it would be a violation if it's otherwise.
I just, I think we're in a holding pattern until we get those, until we can make a motion on that adjustment.
So three says the applicant eliminate the artificial plant material along the top of the awning. The applicant has said...
It's really long.
That's the only place they want to do it, so we're eliminating it. And then five says that a plan will come in and staff will review it, landscape plan. Right? Which is what you were saying.
Right. So... Make three, five covers it, renumber.
We don't want anything regarding maintenance.
Well, the, in five, the landscape plan's coming to staff approval. You're going to have a plan for approval. In that plan, they're going to talk about maintenance, aren't they not?
They are not going to talk about maintenance.
It's a one-time thing?
Yeah, so...
Can you supplement?
Sure. I was supporting keeping three in because it eliminates that and five just is that they have to submit a landscape plan, whether, with whatever it has in it for plant material.
So then in five, you add the requirement of a annual maintenance plan? I don't know. Something along those lines?
Hang tight, she's typing something here, so you can react to it, just one sec, okay?
Jenny, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we can do this at present, but just to move it forward, um, are you, can you check? it forward, are you, can you check if we've gotten public comment via the web?
I can check, and you could make motions on the waivers if you wanted to.
Oh.
Forward with that part two here.
Oh, perfect.
Let me check the public comment first, just to make sure we're, I have, I've received no additional comment at this time.
Are you asking for a motion?
I, there are no additional comments, so I am asking for a motion to approve two waivers.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
No.
It's going to be yes, so, I'll say yes.
No, I'll say no.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, right, that's, I'll say no.
Can I call everyone's name?
I think so. Anyone else can call them?
So, Mr. Fishman, to be clear, what's your vote on the motion to approve the two waivers?
Yes.
Your, your vote was yes to approve the two waivers?
No.
Who's on first?
Who's on first?
Okay. So with Mr. Fishman voting no, my count there was four to two for approval of the two waivers, with Mr. Way and Fishman voting no.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Are you adjusted, Nicole?
So I've moved it from position number three to position number six. It's that all artificial plant material shall be maintained in good condition as assessed from the public right-of-way. Should the city determine at any time the condition of the artificial plant material be deteriorated, the applicant shall repair and replace immediately, or come before the commission with a suitable alternative.
And can you show us what occurred to number three?
It completely went away. It became, for all alterations and additions located.
Got it, so it, it eliminated, everything slid up, and then you inserted at six. Can you show us number five?
Yeah. It shows nine numbers, but it's eight conditions because of the way they're distributed across the page. So the applicant provide a full landscape plan detailing the use of artificial and live vegetation prior to permitting, subject to staff approval. So that is a request simply to obtain a landscape plan. No landscape plan was submitted. We'd like to have a better understanding of the type, the location, the type of landscape material, and the installation.
Any further adjustments?
I would suggest, not to pile on Ms. Martin, but I would suggest after immediately, add a comma and say, or remove, comma, so that they also have the option unambiguously that if it isn't holding up, they can just take it off altogether and not replace or repair it.
Did I get it? Too many commas, too many ors?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the minor project with?
The revised conditions.
Eight, revised, is this eight conditions?
It is, it's.
With the revised eight?
Eight conditions. They're not revised because this is your first motion, so subject to the eight conditions listed.
Got it.
So move.
Second. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
No.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. That was a tough one for me. I was only going to vote yes because I couldn't get the support. New case, 4,000 West Granville Road, item number 21-128 CP Concept Plan. This application is a request for the construction of a 6,900 square foot, one-story, multi-tenant commercial building with drive-through restaurant. The 1.98 acres site is zoned Bridge Street District, Sawmill Center neighborhood, and is plus or minus, is within 500 feet northwest of the intersection of West Dublin Granville Road with Dublin Center Drive. Zach, take it away.
Thank you. Well, good evening. This is a request for review and determination of a concept plan for 4,000 West Dublin Granville Road. To provide some process background, tonight we are reviewing a concept plan within the Bridge Street District, which does require a determination by the commission tonight, based on the criteria listed in the Bridge Street District Code. This is the first of three steps within the Bridge Street District for new development. The second and third require the preliminary and final development plan stages. There are opportunities to combine preliminary and final development plans based on the application, which is a case-by-case request. The applicant tonight is requesting that the preliminary and final development plans be combined, should the concept plan be approved tonight. The concept plan within the Bridge Street District does differ from the concept plans that are located outside the Bridge Street District, as those applications do not require determination and are solely for non-binding feedback, more of an informal review and what you would see within the Bridge Street District. So the site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. This is a 1.98 acre site located in the Sawmill Center neighborhood within the Bridge Street District. This site is currently vacant, sits south of the Lowe's Development, and does have a number of mature trees along the west property line. Additionally, in the southeast corner of the site, there is a low-lying entry feature, which currently does not serve any purpose or function to this site or any surrounding sites. And additionally, there is a decorative wall and sign. The sign is for the Lowe's Development, is a monument sign. With this development, that sign would maintain, would be maintained and would remain for the Lowe's Development. So with the Lowe's Development to the north, when Lowe's was developed, it did create a number of out parcels. This would be one of the out parcels similar to the former Mellow Mushroom site, just to the east, which is shown on the screen. Because these are Lowe's out parcels, there are a number of deed restrictions that are listed for this site, as well as Mellow Mushroom. Both are different. These deed restrictions include limitations on height, size, and uses within proposed buildings. It should be noted that deed restrictions are private agreements between the property owners and tenants, and the city does not, is not involved in the implementation of these agreements as they are negotiated between private entities. For the review of a concept plan, staff has reviewed this application solely to the requirements of the, of concept plan requirements in the Bridge Street Code, as well as the Sawmill Center neighborhood requirements, as our purview is only over city documents that have been approved by council as ordinances, and are not over the deed restrictions. Additionally, there is a 50-foot electric easement located along the west property line. And this current proposal also includes the future development of Village Parkway, which is considered a district connector and principal frontage street within the Bridge Street District. It should be noted, though, that the construction of this future extension is not included with the development, is only accounted for in terms of the site layout and design. Should this application move forward, the applicant will need to continue to work with our staff to finalize the implementation and construction of this extension. Shown on the screen are some existing conditions. These are viewed from the southeast perspective of the site, which can be viewed from West Dublin Granville Road. You can see some of the existing conditions, as well as the amount of vegetation that is located throughout the site. So the Bridge Street District does indicate numerous areas throughout the district that would be considered neighborhood pots. The Sawmill Center neighborhood is one of those districts, and this site is located within this district as represented by the star on your screen. The Sawmill Center neighborhood was developed to allow for active mixes of uses within buildings to create pedestrian-oriented development that connects future and existing streetscapes, also provides well-defined pedestrian access both throughout the site, throughout the proposed site, and also surrounding the site, connecting to adjacent properties. The Sawmill Center neighborhood does identify specific requirements based on your location within this district. It should be noted that with this site, it is not under any requirements to provide any potential gateways, open space nodes, or follow any shopping corridor requirements. It should also be noted that commercial center building types are not permitted at this site. They are permitted on select corridors, specifically along Bridge Park Avenue, which is the east-to-west connection at the center of the image, as well as Sawmill Road. Shown on the screen is the Bridge Street District Street Network. The site is highlighted by the yellow star at the center of the screen. It is located at the intersection of the potential Village Parkway extension and West Dublin Granville Road. Both of these streets are designated as principal frontage streets. Additionally, to the north and east, you will find Banker Drive and an access drive. Both of these are potential neighborhood streets and are currently located on the Lowe's parcel to the north. They are designed as private access drives currently and are not built to public standards. So this is a request for review and approval of a concept plan for an approximately 6,900 square foot, multi-tenant commercial building. This commercial building will include uses such as restaurants and office, which are both permitted within the district. Additionally, to one of the restaurant users, a quick-serve, drive-through accessory use is being proposed, and this would be on the easternmost tenant space. Drive-throughs require approval of a conditional use with the review of a preliminary development plan within the Sawmill Center neighborhood. Additionally, the applicant has identified the loft building type as the proposed building type for their development. Building types do dictate the layout of a building on the site, as well as the character of the building on the lot. And we will get into all of these items as we move forward into these slides. So shown is the proposed site plan for this development. The applicant is proposing 70 parking spaces to the rear of the building, that would be to the north of the building. This does meet the requirements in terms of parking within the Bridge Street District, based on the uses of the building and the space that they occupy within the proposed building. The applicant is proposing a single access point, which is identified by the green box on the screen. This is oriented towards the north along Banker Drive, which is currently a private Banker Drive, as well as pedestrian facilities located on the southern portion of the site. These facilities include an existing drive, or not existing drive, an existing pathway that is located along West Dublin Granville Road, as well as proposed patio spaces and sidewalks connecting the parking lot to the building. Something you will see is that there are currently no proposed pedestrian facilities surrounding the site, so along the perimeter, as well as throughout the site, specifically looking as you're connecting to the parking lot. Should this application move forward, the applicant would be required to continue to work with staff to provide additional facilities for pedestrian access. New development within the Bridge Street District does require open space requirements. This is provided by a calculation of one square foot of open space being required per 50 square feet of development. The applicant is proposing a 500-square-foot open space to the south of the building, which does meet the size requirement for open space. Additionally, you'll see on the west portion of this property, the applicant is proposing a conceptual massing. This is not to be considered with the, or this is not being proposed in terms of the construction of the main building, but simply to show that there is additional space on this site, should the deed restrictions be lifted in the future for this property, and also to show that frontage along Village Parkway could, could be accommodated with future development. Finally, the applicant is proposing a quick-serve drive-through as an accessory use to the east tenant space on the site. Drive-through uses are required to abide by use-specific standards listed in the Bridge Street District, which outlines requirements such as drive-through window locations, menu boards, site and circulation regarding the drive-through, as well as stacking and the design of this drive-through. The drive-through will be oriented towards the Lowe's access drive to the east, which is designated as a future neighborhood street in the code, and will include a street wall and landscaping between the access drive and the drive-through lane. The Bridge Street District was created to encourage and develop well-defined pedestrian-oriented development that is distinct from the typical auto-oriented development in other areas of the city. Auto-oriented development affects the intent for the layout of sites and negatively impacts the access to and safety of pedestrian facilities. Drive-throughs are generally, are generally not encouraged based on the items previously discussed, and have only been granted in the Bridge Street District for banks. Staff is not supportive of the proposed accessory use and is recommending disapproval of the drive-through, as it is inconsistent with the urban form, is in conflict with the intent and goals of the district, and is unlikely that it would meet the conditional use review criteria, which is listed in the standard code and also has been provided in your packets today. The applicant is proposing a loft building type, which is a permitted building type within the district, however, based upon staff's further analysis and based upon the, the proposed stories and height of the building. The building more closely resembles a commercial center building, which, as stated with the neighborhood standards, is not permitted at this site. Commercial center buildings are designated areas along Sawmill Road and Bridge Park Avenue, as depicted in the standards. The commission should consider whether this proposal and the proposed development character of this application should set a precedent for future applications along West Dublin Granville Road. The loft building type does identify specific requirements in the code, four of which are shown on your screen. These are requirements that are, based on staff's review of, of what has been provided to us, do not meet the current requirements. These being stories, required build zone, building entrances, and ground story height. Regarding stories, loft buildings are required to provide two stories. One is being proposed with this building. Within the required build zone, 75% of that front property line coverage is required to be a two-foot minimum for this building. As this is a one-story building, none of that is meeting the requirement within the required build zone, so that is why you see the 0% on the, on the proposed column. Based on the linear footage of the front elevation of the building, they are required to provide three entrances into the building, and only one is provided, as their primary accesses are provided to the north or towards the parking lot of the building. And the ground story height is required to be between 12 and 16 feet. Currently, it varies between 13 and 22 feet. Although some of this is parapet, some of it is roof height, and this would be fleshed out should this move forward to the preliminary development plan stage. The proposed architecture is contemporary with parapet roof lines on a single-story building. As stated previously, the building is oriented towards the, the parking lot to the rear, which does not meet the intent of the Bridge Street Code, by encouraging tenants to turn their back to the street. Additionally, the inspiration for the building is shown on your screen. A variety of materials, including wood, stone, masonry, and metal panels are provided. Should this application move forward, and move forward with the development of this site, a full analysis of the code would be required for the loft building, and would be required at the preliminary development plan stage. Staff has reviewed this application to the applicable concept plan review criteria, and has identified the following criteria of number one, two, three, four, five, and eight are currently not met with this development, and staff is recommending disapproval of the concept plan, based on the review of our criteria, the following findings that are shown on the screen, and the information that was provided in staff report and in this presentation. Additionally, the request to combine the preliminary development plan and the final development plan, staff is recommending disapproval of this as well, based on our recommendation of disapproval of the concept plan. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have for staff. Otherwise, our applicant is here to address any questions, concerns you may have. Thank you.
Do we want to do questions or applicant presentation?
I'd like to ask him a question.
Go ahead.
Regarding the access to the private drive, walk me through a little bit about private drive, neighborhood street. Is it a public access, or is it not? Do they have to have an agreement with the property owner to get on and off? Or how can we say, this is where your only exit entrance is, when it's not a public right-of-way?
It's a great question. So the site currently has access off of that private section of Banker Drive. They, I believe there are currently two access points that are shown if you were to drive through that site, and they're consolidating to one. So they're not changing their access to any separate road there. So they're maintaining what they currently have as their access. And in terms of how that fits in with the Bridge Street District network, principal frontage streets? frontage streets, typically you don't want to have your access to the site off of those streets, so such as an extension of Village Parkway or West Dublin-Granville Road. So since it is off of a neighborhood street, or what would be a future neighborhood street, it would still meet the requirements within that street network.
So you're saying that the owner of that street, which is Lowe's, right? If they decided to just dig it up, they couldn't do that?
I would probably defer to the applicant to speak towards those requirements in terms of their access, yeah, since it is currently a private section.
All right, thank you. Before that, I have the same line of questioning for clarification. In terms of the thoroughfare plan, you talked about Banker Drive being, in the future, would be a city street?
Correct. It is designated as a future neighborhood street. The section that is adjacent to the site is currently on the Lowe's parcel, and it is built to private access drive standards. So should this, in the future, should Lowe's decide to develop that portion and it became public right-of-way, we would need to, the city would require reconstruction of that to public standards.
So the city would take it over and make it into a public street? Is that, and reconstruct it to city standards?
Ultimately, that would be decided with the development of that site, as that is something that is discussed and negotiated with the applicant in the city. It's hard to say at this point whether that's something that the city would do or that the applicant would take on, but it is not within the scope of this project, as it's not being discussed, or it's not within the parameters of this lot.
I mean, yes, all of what Zach said. Typically, the developer is responsible for constructing.
So the plan, the thoroughfare plan, or whatever Dublin calls it, is not, it's not quite right, because it designates Banker Drive as an existing neighborhood street, but a potential one would be dotted, and it doesn't show dotted in the plan. It's solid. So the question was...
I mean, the street exists, so that's why it's not shown as a, typically the dotted are future. So it exists, it's just as a public street, we would have to remedy that.
The key just doesn't say that. It says it's either one or the other, and because it's solid.
This is a pretty nuanced instance.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what is the future of that street, because it hinges on this development, as we were discussing, so.
I mean, up until the point that Lowe's would redevelop their site, it would remain a private drive.
Right. And second to that is to really be able to extend Village Parkway, Lowe's would have to go away, because unless you did a lot of very tight maneuvering of alignment around it, you couldn't get that road through to Dublin Road.
So again, the only part that would have to be constructed would be the part that is on the site that is under consideration. So there could be an instance, and we have had that before, where pieces and sections of road are constructed on the parcels that are before us, knowing that future roadway connections, again, assume if Lowe's would redevelop, then Village Parkway from Banker north to Bridge Park would then have to also be constructed.
And it would be a right-in, right-out only because it's not a full intersection. There's a median there, correct? Correct?
Again, we would determine that.
Well, right now, it's a full median, so that'd have to, and I don't think it's probably too close to the other intersection to put another full intersection. So it'd be right-in, right-out. And I'm just going with a series of questions. So the other question to you, would this application, would it make sense to consider that that is a future access point and to plan the development with access from there? So could there be an access off of that street?
Again, I don't think there's anything precluding that unless engineering has something different to say about access being provided on Village Parkway.
I was thinking of the dimension between Banker and 161. Is that sufficient with stacking distance? And again, that's why I was asking, is it right-in, right-out, because that would then change the answer, I think.
So Village Parkway is a principal frontage street, so we would restrict access off of Village Parkway. The city engineer has the ability to waive that requirement, but we typically do not do that.
So it likely would never have, be an access point for this parcel or the other one that we're...
Correct.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, the portion of Banker Drive from Shamrock Boulevard to David Road, which is one north-south street to the east, is within public right-of-way. So that is a public street within public right-of-way currently.
But not in the plan, future plan, right?
Well, that's the existing condition, so it is...
Would just stay, right?
Correct, it would just stay, yes.
Thank you, that was another question.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Additional questions at this time? I think we can turn it over to you. Name and address, again, please.
Nelson Yoder, 6640 Riverside Drive, Crawford-Hoynes, Principal of Crawford-Hoynes Development Partners. This is a tough one, to have to draw the short straw and to come and talk to you guys about tonight. It's a site that has deed restrictions. We're usually in the process of trying to do things that are more dense than code permits and asking for density variances, and in this case, we're having to ask for permission to build something smaller. So it's a little bit unusual, probably, for all of us and within the Bridge Street District, but I'd like to give you a little bit of background on it quickly, and have the architects who are here, too, to talk about it as well. So I have just a couple of slides to show you what, kind of where we've gone. It's been a journey over the last year with staff to try to get to where we are today. The thing you see in front of you now is where we started with the process with staff back in September of 2020. And in this case, we were looking at a drive-through on the end cap of the building, and the, you can see the inline space next to it. We really got some good feedback from them. Also, you see the two existing access points coming off of Banker Drive are left as existing, so we had two access points to the site as well. We got some feedback from staff at that point on how and where this site should sit, how it should look. And I'll point out one thing just right from the beginning, we were, if you look at Mellow Mushroom off to the east, you see how far the building is held off the street, and how it doesn't interact with West Dublin-Granville Road, how there's parking between the building and the street. That's really the more traditional suburban form. We really were trying to bring as many of the walkable urbanism concepts as we could into the site plan, given the constraints that we're dealing with. So we started here already, already different from the traditional suburban form. We go to the next one, next slide. So in November 2020, a few months later, we came back to staff with changes reflecting their comments. And if you, you see the building's been elongated to occupy more of the frontage, so less visibility to the back. The drive-through has also been pulled behind the building, so now you can't see it from West Dublin-Granville Road. You can only see it from the Lowe's driveway and from the service drive in the back, which we thought was great, great suggestion. Also, got some additional public seating space out front, also really good suggestion as well, and tried to improve internal circulation. At this point, we'd been asked to consolidate the curb cuts by engineering from two to one, this for the traffic flow onto the public for a future public right-of-way. Go to the next one. We got some more comments from staff. One was to pull the curb cut more to the center of the site, which you can see. Another one here, we've, the Village Parkway location was nailed down with engineering in terms of what the alignment wanted to be. This site happens to have land on it that, you know, is an out parcel created back in 2000, before Bridge Street District was really a glimmer in anybody's eye. There was a, at some point, and at that point, Lowe's put deed restrictions on this site, limiting 6,000 square feet, as well as the height, as well as a lot of the uses. And as, I don't know if it's in the report or not, but we approached Lowe's to try to get them to drop these deed restrictions, because we would like nothing more than to develop more square footage on this site. There's a high cost associated with it, and they flat-out refused. We asked them again, and they flat-out refused. So we really can't get rid of these deed restrictions as much as we would like them to, as much as the Bridge Street District code now wants something different than it did back in 2000, you know, when at that point, the zoning code was supporting something like the Mellow Mushroom development they see to the right. We're really kind of put in a box here where we need to address both the deed restrictions that we cannot lift, we have no legal authority to lift, the city has no legal authority to lift, and try to create a project here that allows for walkable urbanist concepts and gets us teed up for the future. So in this case, we've identified where in an ideal world, Lowe's goes away eventually, maybe in 20 or 30 years, and the deed restrictions are lifted by the future owner. We want to make sure that we are allowing ourselves to, at that time, address both Village Parkway and West Dublin-Granville Road by identifying a location for a future building. At that point, perhaps parking is less important. West parking is being used. We could even remove some of the parking that you see there and create a nice building to align Village Parkway. So, you know, how can we create the best project we can now within the restrictions we have and not, that puts us in a position where we can't deliver in the future? That's really what we're trying to do here. So as of January 2021, this is where we were at, I think at a much, much better place, thanks to staff and their comments, suggestions. If you go back two slides, back one more. So you move from here to next slide, to there, to the next slide, and, you know, things really, I think, started to hum at that point with really making the site work. If you go to the next slide, you know, this is the plan that's in front of you tonight, very, very similar to what we ended on at the end of the year. A little bit more green space in front of the building, and the patio open spaces have been refined as well. Go to the next slide. Just a few pictures for people that haven't had a chance to visit the site, in case you haven't yet. The arrow number one up there is if you, if you're coming out of Lowe's and you're passing the site. I think there's a lot of concern in the staff report about the visibility of the drive-through. And for us, you know, we're not drive-through people. In this case, if there's no drive-through, there's no project. We already have a tenant that is willing to go here. There's somebody that everybody on this commission would love to have here. It would be a great addition to Bridge Street. But without a drive-through, this, they don't happen, or without that and one additional tenant that we have lined up on the site, this project simply doesn't happen. So, you know, how can we get the best, treat this the best way we possibly can? Unfortunately, I think where we ended up here is a pretty good, pretty good place. Off to the right on this top picture, the site, there's a line of mature trees between where the stacking area would be. There's 24 feet between the curb and the edge of proposed pavement. If you look at where this proposed drive-through would be, it's behind the tree line, and you can see the suburban parked in front of the tree line to give you a sense of the scale of the trees that are there. It's, they're massive, to say the least. So you really can't even see this portion of the site from 161. Go to the next slide.
Mr. Yoder, can you point out on the site plan where those trees are?
Sure, yeah, they are. I don't have a pointer. I don't know if anybody has a pointer here, but if not, I can, they're off to the right between, if you look at the arrow number one, or it's pointing down, that shows the vantage point of the picture. So off to the right of the curb, you have that row of existing trees.
So the plan isn't reflecting those existing trees, is that correct?
I believe so. Is that, is that correct? Maybe, as close as you could from...
I just want to differ, I don't see those trees on this plan.
Yeah, but those are, would be existing to remain, certainly. They're mature trees and provide a great screen from about four feet up to probably 12 feet, and could be infilled below the tree canopy to really fill in a solid form. The next slide. So here is a view, you can see, if you look up at the picture again on the left side, showing where the photo was taken, looking back towards 161. There's 23 foot nine, according to the plan, between that tree line, and the grass is mowed approximately, just by coincidence, right, where the, about where the edge of pavement would be within a foot. So to give you an idea of the buffering that is there. So there are plenty of additional room there to do additional landscape planning as required to really buffer and soften that edge. Go to the next plan, the next screen. Some of the context, in case you haven't really had a chance to drive through here, the first view is what this site is faced with across the private drive to the north. It's the wall of the Lowe's. Behind that is the Garden Center. Image two is if you're coming up Banker Drive, this is where it converts to a private street. This is the view along the street as well. So the site has some of its challenges, as you know, and we're trying to pave the way for making things better in the future and not reflect what we have here, which is certainly not great. But I think we're, what we're doing here is we'll definitely set the right tone out on 161 and on Village Parkway. So, you know, if and when this building goes away, we're in much better shape. Go to the next slide. Yeah, so here's the overall massing plan that you already saw in the staff report. The plan is a result of almost a year of work now, or about a year of work, which is trying to do a lot of different things. We'd love to just take the form-based code and apply it directly to this site and deliver exactly what the form-based code asks. But one of the reasons the planning commission exists is for complicated sites like this, is to try to make projects work that are addressing enough of the requirements when it's impossible to meet all the requirements that are facing the site. So here, we're able to preserve the opportunity for that future building on Village Parkway if and when the restrictions are dropped. The project's facilitating a transfer of land to the city for the future roadway. It's also providing patios and open space on 161 and creating a nice buffer. Now, if you drive down 161, you see Lowe's, you see the parking lot. When you think about what this building will look like from 161, a one-story street front that I believe we could easily add additional doors to, so we're not required to have the waiver for doors. Typically, these tenant spaces can have fronts and backs, as you see around the city. Additional pedestrian facilities, certainly, I think, are necessary to make this work, especially along the Lowe's Access Drive, but we end up with as walkable of a solution as we can. And I'd like for us to try to think about Grandview, for example. You go to Grandview, the one-story buildings where the Avenue Steakhouse is, where Spazo is. These are one-story buildings that have, that have great walkability. I think sometimes we start to think that a two-story building is required in order to have walkability, and it's not necessarily the case. You can have fantastic, walkable urban spaces where the ground floor with the outdoor patio seating and the actual interface between the road and the tenant spaces really happen. So I would encourage you to, as you're thinking about this case, is to think about it like Grandview, not think about it like your bright Bridge Park, where we're able to build six-story buildings and have lots of things happening above it. In this case, we're simply not. The Lowe's Access Drive, I think you'll read in the report, there's some comments about the requirement of Village Parkway for the site to satisfy the minimum block requirement. The last thing I'll touch on there is just that the Lowe's Access Drive is either a public street or it's not. If you look at the Lowe's Access Drive as a street, which it suggests that it's a future public street, so therefore, a drive-through shouldn't be near it, the site does meet the requirements for minimum block length between David Road and this Lowe's Access Drive. So Village Parkway is not required to be in place for us to satisfy that for whatever, for one reason or the other. If you look at Lowe's, the Lowe's Access Drive as a private drive and not a public street, now there's really no question about putting a drive-through on that road. So it's really, it's one or the other. I think unfortunately, the way it was presented, I think unintentionally, the report, the access drive is presented as both a public street and as an access drive, and it can be, you know, one or the other. If you go to the next slide, the last thing I'll touch on is here's some elevations with a little bit of color added to them to show the, what's behind the sidewalk. Really need some street trees here, which are city street trees, to help soften that edge up, but you get the idea of the interaction between the street and the building. If you go to the next slide, this is the back of the building with a little bit of color. The, you can see the drive-through window on the left. You have a line of trees off to the left in this image, and a lot of glass facing the parking lot. Again, something that I would say this is a, incorporates a COVID-friendly walk-through, or drive-through, but also doesn't make this site into the antithesis of walkable urbanism. It makes it still a very walkable, nice site that doesn't have pedestrian pathways crossing the drivelanes. We're trying to make the best of a really challenging site, and I really appreciate your help as a commission in identifying some of the challenges that we're trying to deal with as an owner of this particular site, and look at it through that lens, rather than just trying to enforce the code book without the complicated issues that face this site. We would say that this site's really not necessarily setting a precedent for other sites, because other sites up and down Bridge Park or 161 don't have these deed restrictions that we're having to deal with. And again, if they did not exist, we'd be the first ones lined up to build a taller building here. Our next application is a two-story building for the site, just immediately to the west of this, 12,000 square feet instead, or more than that, instead of six. Why? Because there are no deed restrictions. If there's a question about precedent, hopefully that would answer it, that even this developer is not doing a one-story building and asking for that appeal from you guys, where it's not required. As far as overall building, I'd concern, we were in front of the commission before, Russ Hunter was here, and heard this commission say, "We want to have nice one-story buildings, not fake two-story buildings." So take that money that you would spend by making a building falsely tall and deliver a better site and deliver with better site amenities and with the better elevation." And that's what we've tried to do here, was to create a building that is, for the building we're delivering here and the site amenities that we're delivering here, that we've done that. We've tried to take the height out of the building, the false height out of the building, and deliver a nice structure. So to that point... So to that point, I'll turn it over to these guys, if they want to say anything about the architecture. Myers &amp; Associates has done a fantastic job for us on this project. See if they have anything they want to add, just on the building, before we get into the overall discussion.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian McNally with Myers &amp; Associates, 232 North Third Street, Columbus. So I want to thank everybody for the time to look at this. Typically, we wouldn't show that level of detail in our concept plan. Usually, it's lots of blocks and massing, but we felt it's kind of hard to look at the white box massing in this case and try to envision what it could be with so many other constraints that we're working against on the site. So as Nelson said, there's definitely some constraints that we've had to deal with. Lots of time and effort has gone into where we are right now with the placement of the building. I'm not sure if we really touched on it too much earlier, but there is, to the west side of our site, there's a large overhead electric line. So we do have an easement, a very large easement that we're working towards, staying away from on that side of the site. On the east side of the site, we do have, there's the Lowe's pedestal sign, I think you probably saw in one of the images. So trying not to incorporate that sign into our design of the building at all. So that kind of helps position where the building's going to sit on site. Definitely want it to sit towards Dublin-Granville Road, being the principal frontage street, and have some active engagement with pedestrians along that frontage. This is a good shot along Dublin-Granville. But the other restriction that we've been working against is from the deed restriction, 7,000 square feet. And that incorporates total building square footage, so it's not 7,000 square feet per floor. And although Dublin's not to be concerned with deed restrictions and reviewing it per code requirements, it's something that we, it's just the reality of the situation, it's something we do have to deal with on this site, and anybody's going to have to deal with it until that restriction is lifted. So in a 7,000-square-foot building, to go through the process of choosing a building type for this site within the Bridge Street District Code, obviously, a commercial center building is a good fit. Single-story building, zero to 25 feet required building zone, but along this corridor, that building is not allowable. The next closest building we had available was a loft-style building, but it's a two-story minimum requirement. So with a 7,000-square-foot building, at two stories, you're looking at really a 3,500-square-foot floor plate, which is a little bit harder to develop and show the scale and the size of development that we would want to on a site, but then really would restrict us on how much frontage we can take up along Dublin-Granville. It's going to be very small, it'd be half the size of this building. So we still wouldn't be able to meet certain code requirements like that. So I think we kind of came up with this concept, and Nelson and team came up with this longer kind of sprawling design to take up more of the site along Dublin-Granville, create more interest. I think what we've done is broken up the mass into three or four different main heights and had this similar stitch in the middle to keep it all together and tie it in at a lower elevation, definitely including a lot of storefront. You know, in some spots, you can see almost all the way through the building, especially on this end unit, trying to bring some verticality into the design with some of the facade materials. And then in a couple instances, is pulling the facade kind of away from the building to create supports for, in this case, would be an overhead canopy, creating some horizontal elements as well to kind of stretch it out a little bit more. On both ends of the site, put in larger patios, just to get that engagement and be able to see that activity along West Dublin-Granville. So we think that kind of helps keep that active. I do see that there's, it looked like there was a couple of doors not showing in plan, but there was a door planned for the last tenant to come in off of the street, off of the open space. So something that we can make a correction to on that. But we're definitely here to answer any questions, address any concerns. Seems like we have a lot to talk about.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Could you put that picture back? Do you have, you say you, I know you're caught between a rock and a hard place, that's obvious here, between a deed restriction and a code. I think you've done some creative uses to try to get around that. But the deed restrictions, you said you talked to Lowe's. Do they understand? Do you have some record or anything from Lowe's as to why, as to that discussion?
They have stood by the fact that they unequivocally will not go back on decisions that they've made in the past. The recorded deed restriction with the 6,000 square feet or 7,000 square feet, the height, the parking requirements, with the number of units that they have across the world, I guess, once they make a decision like this, they don't go back. With the intention of if Lowe's, if we thought Lowe's was hanging by a thread and we could wait them out, that might be one thing. But Lowe's is doing better than ever worldwide, and I'm sure this location is doing well too. So we're excited about the...
So they realize that this is an undevelopable lot within our zoning code. They know, understand that there are...
It does not matter to them. It's not a them problem. That's an us problem, and it's a city problem. We can leave the, continue to leave the site vacant, or we can develop it with a restaurant and another restaurant on the site and be able to activate it. We'd like to see that happen as the owners. Hopefully, the city would like to see that happen. But if we can't, then it will continue to sit fallow as it has for the last 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to picture a Venn diagram, and I don't know if it exists or not. So there's a circle that has the restrictions, the deed restrictions, and there's another circle that's the code. Is there an overlap? Is there an area, and I'm not saying it's economical, or even that it's arguably attractive, but appropriate, but there is a place where the two could work together. That's a question. Is...
No, there's really, there's not, because if we go to a six, let's say we're trying to get to a two-story building on this site to meet the code requirement, we would go to a 3,500-square-foot footprint, and that long building would become a very short building that would then not be occupying enough of the frontage. Also, it'd be very inefficient floor plates, but we'd end up with a building that can't get any, can't add any additional square footage. So the best solution in terms of holding the street is to really do what we've done here. I think we can probably ask the law director or two to chime in on the position that we are in and how the deed restrictions impact the zoning requirements, but there's not really a spot...
I mean, we can take the position that the deed restrictions are a private matter, and you play the hand you're given. I'm not saying that's an appropriate position for us to take, or a realistic position. So I'll save it for discussion, but, well, one other question. The trend on drive-throughs, is there any room to change this to, you know, in COVID, everybody's picking up, so the people are ordering with an app instead of, often instead of the electronic menu board, digital menu board, and instead of queue and all that, just a line to just pick up your food that's brought out to you, et cetera?
So in this case, the restaurant tenant that is closest to us has that setup. The restaurant tenant at the other end, that is not a workable solution. And they're not straight restaurant, they actually are coffee-related, to give you guys a hint as far as why that would be so required for them. What I will tell you too is that the idea of having a bank in this site, for example, this site is really difficult, because a Fifth Third Bank put a deed restriction on this parcel when they sold it to Lowe's in 2000, saying that no financial institution was allowed to be located on this site or any competing ATMs. We went straight to Fifth Third. They denied our application to remove the restrictions with concern that people would, a new bank would move in here and would skim deposits from Fifth Third. So we did not, we're not able to put a bank on this site with a drive-through either. It's not allowed for the deed restrictions.
Drive-through Bitcoin. Drive-through Bitcoin.
Yeah, right.
It's the loophole. Thank you.
Additional questions?
I have just one other, real quick. The Lowe's allows you up to a 28-foot height.
Correct.
Right? And it looks like you just stayed at 22. You could, I understand where you're trying to stretch out, but you could get some height. You could get some additional height, maybe six footer. That's about it.
Yeah, we could add height. It costs money to add height that we'll have to take out somewhere else in order to make the project viable. So again, we were trying to put the money in the ground where people are, where they'll see it, and not just add height that's not needed.
Right, and it only allows you one story, is that what you're saying? You couldn't, even if you added the height, you wouldn't be able to use the other story?
There's a height restriction, there's not a number of stories restriction from Lowe's.
There's not.
Square foot. Square foot, yeah. So the square footage is really what's driving the story requirement, right? So only 7,000 square feet, which is the footprint that you see on that site. You make it smaller, you have it, you still see the parking lot, you still see Lowe's in the back. That's really the challenge there.
Okay.
This might be a question more for Brian. So hearing, we have more height, and knowing, it's been a while, forgive me, Brian. Actually, I don't know if we have a building code official at all in our midst, so maybe it's, Brian, you're it. I'm going to, I'm going to mezzanines, right? And I know mezzanines are always interesting in how you use them, and then how they apply towards the building's square feet. To it, of course, a double-height coffee house or a double-height restaurant is kind of compelling, right, with a little bit of mezzanine? Now, I don't remember that well enough to, I mean, don't get me wrong, we'd all be playing, you know what I mean, we'd all be playing with the code carefully, but I don't remember what the stipulations are, and if sort of a restaurant assembly use, like a restaurant, could leverage a mezzanine in such a way.
And typically, I mean, as far as the code is concerned, mezzanines are, I mean, they're done all the time. You know, it's not a hard thing to do, but do you think that the deed restriction would count that mezzanine towards square footage, usable square footage, right? Because it's within the building, it's interior. Yeah, and as far as the building code is concerned, it's 10% of the floor area is what you can do overlooking the floor.
It's still counted as square footage, though, correct? It's not counted against your, maybe your counter area?
It is. I mean, I see, kind of see where you're going with that.
I didn't remember quite how that all shook out. I just know it's interpreted different, based on what it is, but it potentially got, you know what I mean, elevated the building, potentially got you someplace, and potentially didn't count towards the square footage, depending on, again, how the code is written and how the deed restriction is written and...
I feel like if we were to add a mezzanine space in there, we would have to take out some length of the building to make up the difference, to still teeter on that 7,000.
Yeah, we would. It's clicked in my head where you're going with it, because you're right, mezzanine has a weird thing, and it's number of stories. So if you, if a mezzanine is open to the floor below, you don't count it as a story. And that's, that might be what you're thinking, right? That's just clicked in my head, too. So it's still square footage, but it's still a one-story building under the code. In this case, we can do a two-story building under the code, so it doesn't really help us.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I couldn't remember.
I do have another question, or a question. So the line of questioning I was asking about the right-of-way for the future Village Parkway was, I was thinking that you could flip the drive-through over to that side and somehow use that right-of-way maybe as an easement in the short term to provide access to the drive-through and get that all out of that Lowe's access drive side of it.
I could tell you, that's how we started, was to have it on that side of the building, because it would even circulate a little bit better. The pushback that we got, which I agree with, once we got down the road, was that with Village Parkway going in there, we don't know how soon or how far in the future that's going to be. There was some real concern about having the drive-through close to a future public street versus next to the driveway. So it was flipped back the other direction.
But, I mean, the likelihood of that road, I mean, there's no need for that road in the foreseeable future. So it just seems like, just all that real estate is just going to sit there, because at some point in the future, we're going to have a road there, seems a little bit short-sighted.
I think what we run into on that as well is that because it's shown on the thoroughfare plan, the city council thoroughfare plan, it's required to be set aside for, to allow for future roadway development...
Right.
...without an act of Congress, effectively.
But I would assume we could get, there could be some kind of a time-limited easement or some kind of an easement that would allow that to happen? Seems like...
The discussions we've had with, I think, with engineering and economic development have been that perhaps they want us to build that road sooner than later as part of this project. So that's something we don't really see as an asset to this particular project this particular time, but I think their interest is in pushing it, I'll let them...
But if it was, if it was your drive-through driveway in the short term, then it does have an asset, right? Because it's providing, I'm just looking at this from a site planning standpoint and saying that would be a preferable place to put the drive-through and get it out of that kind of corridor and the visibility. But just to, I guess that was just a suggestion or a...
So just to clarify, in terms of the location of drive-throughs, and I think the APK was kind of pushing towards this direction, but within the code, some of the specific use requirements for drive-throughs require, even though Village Parkway is currently not constructed, but it is potential, drive-throughs are not able to front to principal frontage streets. So even though it is not existing, we still have to plan the site, and the APK has to plan the site as if it were being constructed tomorrow. That is the requirements that we set forth in terms of the site planning, because that is an adopted document that was established by council. So that's why the site has kind of oriented the way it has towards those neighborhood, potential neighborhood streets, instead of the principal frontage streets.
Is that something that Planning &amp; Zoning could weigh in on and offer some support to do something different?
I mean, I guess, sorry, I'm looking to see if Michael's coming up here, too. I mean, again, I think, as we've stated before, right, the street network map outlines what's to be there. Council makes that determination. I mean, I suppose as part of this conversation, we could talk about that. I think there's also, which Zach was alluding to as well, there are use-specific standards that talk about where drive-throughs can happen. I don't know if we would, knowing one of those is you can't front on a principal frontage street. Putting this access right on 161, I think that's more concerning than where it's currently being proposed, because it's, I mean, we're concerned about the location of this and the visibility and whether that meets the walkable part of Bridge Street that we're holding so dear to. But adding this then, so it's completely visible from 161, unless I'm misunderstanding.
It wasn't visible, but you have a right-in, right-out driveway that comes, that allows you to get into the site and get around, and you could exit on Banker, it doesn't have to necessarily come out onto 161. It's literally trying to get the drive-through out of that side of the site. And again, maybe if you don't mind...
And I don't think our issue is with the necessary, I mean, it is with the drive, it's with the drive-through in general and what that sets for the tone of this corridor. So ours is a bigger question of the drive-through. I think we can, depending on the commission's discussion tonight, we can figure out if there's a different mechanism. But I think our standalone issue is the lack of intensity, which, again, you're bound by deed restrictions, and then the layout and the design and the use does not comply with what the Bridge Street would encourage, so...
The side of the building, sorry.
If you could flip the drive-through, you get all that circulation out of that corner, and maybe you can take the building at that corner and do something with it, so you start to anchor that corner differently? Because you don't have to be beholden to get a car up to the building and, you know, pick up coffee and all that stuff. And you have more space on the other side, where you've got the future building, and there's, it just seems like there's a lot more space to accommodate that.
I think the one advantage we do have over on the existing driveway, if you look at what it aligns with and where it goes, it's effectively the front of the Lowe's building. The other one does have the potential to be a road that doesn't align with the shopping center. And with the amount of existing mature trees that are along that side, the screening option or ability for us at that corner, I think ends up actually working out pretty well. Whereas if you flip it to the other side, it's kind of a hodgepodge of trees, there's not a predetermined hedge that's already put in exactly the right place, you know, to help screen.
You haven't sold me on the trees yet. I have to see them on the plan first.
Okay, they're good. They're a good size, and they also provide a good screen. But I think the picture that I had in that presentation, if you go back a couple pictures, I guess, yeah, back one or two, back there, you could... there's that picture, you see the height of the suburban versus the height of the trees, they're taller than, much, much taller than the, the car, even the deciduous trees that are in the background, and that evergreen hedge that you have in the, the front, those evergreen trees would, would screen better than anything that we've, we've really got. If there's room there to add pedestrian facilities, I think to connect 161 back to the, the front of the Lowe's, if somebody wants to walk to Lowe's, they could, you never know. I actually do walk around in this area and up near Salmo Road occasionally, a few, you know, pedestrian facilities like that might actually be, be of good service to allow for some better connectivity, for sure.
Additional questions? Comments? Jane, you look ready?
So, I totally get where you're caught between a rock and a hard place. This is Dublin Grandville Road and it's a, you know, I, I would have to ask the question how this helps the pedestrian friendliness of the street. It's auto-oriented to me. The, this is, I know it's a concept, but I would even be okay, as I've mentioned before, and, and maybe on one of the others that's going to be talked to next, I would be okay with a portion of a building across the front having a one-story. I do believe we need to have some height. I think, as you've mentioned Grandview, I think of Clintonville, I was there not too long ago, the pedestrian orientation was that there was tunnels through, it was not one long building, you were able to walk in and through it from the parking lot. Everything across the front is extremely accessible. One of these days, the hope is that there, people will be walking 161 like they walk Bridge Park. That's the hope, that's the dream. So, it won't happen if, if this always faces the back and all of the orientation is towards back, so I agree with the criteria here, it's not really meeting the Bridge Street intent and pedestrian-ness. I understand where you're, where you have a, you have the rub here. I think that a mellow mushroom, you're right, it was too far back, was, they didn't take advantage of being able to utilize that outdoor space, people would sit inside and eat. You have the opportunity here to maybe shorten all of this, create some heights in the middle, wing it out to one floor and the ends, and really take advantage of the, the streetscape and the patios and utilize it that way. I, I don't think it meets enough of the elements of pedestrian friendliness to, to grant as many, the waivers of, you know, the, the type of building doesn't belong here, it doesn't even, it's, I'm sorry that you have these deed restrictions, but it's a, you know, to me, there's, there's more that can be done here to create that pedestrian friendliness. I worry about the, you have 24-foot, we know for ourselves that to create any kind of buffer, you need 25-foot, and the pedestrian connections here will not allow it if you, if you're just going to use up all of that space for, for buffering. I just, I just think it doesn't speak pedestrian, it still speaks, it still speaks suburban auto to me.
If we could make this work session, I think I have a good idea. Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have a tunnel connection from one, from the street into the, the parking area, like what is done right in Clintonville, where North Star, some other restaurants are. We're not allowed to do two buildings, but if you have a, a building that has a tunnel through it, I think that's something that could be, could be accomplished without violating the zoning code, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be counted as square footage if it's inside, so it's not inside. That is a, I think that's potentially a really good idea. And then, as you look at the site plan, if you pull the site plan back up, the, the way that the drive-through is currently configured, it's, it's looping out and running parallel with the Lowe's access drive, I, I think if we look at eliminating a couple of parking spaces and ratchet that back to the point where we end up with more of a buffer, that instead of just the 23 feet, we have more space along that, that driveway, we'd have more of the room that you're looking for to have pedestrian facilities and a buffer, and then that, that space starting, and, and that way, we really could start to speak to people who, who walk here. And then the most important thing for pedestrian-friendly, as somebody who lives on Ring's Road where there's nothing to walk to, is to have stuff to walk to, right? And that is what this is going to create, is, is a, we'll be able to walk to a coffee shop and walk to a restaurant, now there's some reason to go here, and there's some reason to, with the, it's not necessarily the length of the walk, it's what's along the way, is always what we always talk about, and this, this stretch feels like an eternity because there's nothing there, and it's one reason why it makes walking difficult. So, I, I think we can probably get there by incorporating a couple of the changes that you have. If you think about, about a walking experience, if you're on 161 and you can poke through, you can either go directly into the tenant spaces from 161, now I'm a pedestrian, I'm happy, or if I can walk back to the parking lot and I can come in, I, I'm happy as well.
Well, you know, I, I, I won't take very much time, but, but I, but I do think that because the face of the building looks more at the parking lot, and I'm not for that, I'm not really for a drive-through there, I mean, I think once again, we keep speaking to the auto and we're not speaking to the pedestrian. This face needs to be built for the pedestrian. The other side, even though it's Lowe's, there are a lot of people that walk, that go to Lowe's, it's a very busy parking area, and if you could walk across, but I have to walk across a sea of parking to get to this building, so now I have to walk through Lowe's big parking asphalt and then through this big parking asphalt, so this doesn't speak pedestrian, it just speaks, it still speaks suburban shopping center.
If there is a sidewalk, though, that you suggested between 161 and the, the front of Lowe's, which is what we're talking about, creating a nice wide buffer, a pedestrian connection, I think, I think we could get there, and whether or not there's a drive-through on the other side of all that, that hedgerow that you see or not, that, that, you're not crossing its path, you can see from the, the look of the way the drive-through looks from the parking lot, it looks like an occupied commercial space with lots of glass facing, facing that way.
It needs a lot of love, I guess, it's still, there's, there's maybe some potential there, but right now, I, yeah, I couldn't...
I think if we can get as many comments and suggestions like that from the board and try to find a way where we can work together through practically, practically having a work session at this point, to figure out how, how we can satisfy all these diverse requirements and make it the best we can make it, we're all about doing that, I think we're making progress already.
I'd echo Jane's comments, and I don't have answers, but the pedestrian-friendly or lack of pedestrian friendliness is, is sort of strikes me. Is pedestrian-friendly and a drive-through, are they mutually exclusive? They seem to be, but, but maybe they're not. So, if there's a way to accommodate that, I like the, the cut-through idea, you see it on Grandview Avenue, just where you were talking about, you know, you see it in Clintonville all the time, so I think breaking that up, and I, I'm, I'm open-minded and not falling on our swords about, it has to be, it can't be one-story because, I mean, it's, I think it's a unique, a unique property, unique circumstance, and we just want to see the best thing we can for Dublin Grandville Road, and that, it isn't what it is right now, that's for sure, so I'm, I'm open.
I, I, I agree, I, I, I think it's a tough thing, I, I don't know enough about the deed restrictions here to tell you why you can't, Lowe's can't change them, or if you own the property, or, I mean, we're not into that, so, but I, I think that the goal of the Bridge Street corridor is to have a walk of community, and every other application we've had in this area, we've, we've tried to encourage that, and so I think you've got a challenge, so I, I can't tell you how to do it, but, but I, I think that, you're just going to have to go back to the drawing board, I guess, and figure out, you know, what you can do, I encourage you, it's an empty lot sitting there, and, you know, so a mellow mushroom certainly isn't, isn't eyesore now, and, and so, I'd like to see you fix that area up, you know, so...
Leo?
Appreciate all the hard work, all the aversions you've done over the last year, and I, I do think it's a great plan, but it, but in order to be true to the vision that, that's been established for that corridor, it's just not the, not going to fit. I don't know how you get rid of deed restrictions, I don't know, that's, whether economic development and the city get involved somehow to, to establish that public purpose that makes it, our vision is the paramount reason why we are only letting certain things happen on that corridor, and there's a lot of parcels that are waiting to, to be developed, and I'd, I'd like to stick with those successful projects that are resembling that, rather than make exceptions for something. As nice as this project looks, it's just not the fit for that corridor from the way I see it, so that's my comments.
So, to your point, I think we have a vision that's way ahead of itself, because there's so many pieces along this corridor that are fighting against the vision and we can't really do anything to change them, and to have property like this sit vacant and not having it contributing at all, I'm not sure is the right approach. The challenge is you've got 161, which is a 45-mile-an-hour roadway, and people are going 50 or more, there's no on-street parking, there's a nice walk pathway along it. I think what you're trying to do to animate that walkway and to get some frontage onto the street is, is very valid, and at this point in time, until Lowe's goes away and we can put in all the streets and all of that, we can achieve the vision, but, you know, that could be 20 years from now or, or longer, so to get an active use here, I think, and to, and going through the, the options that you went through to get to where you got, I think, you know, that long kind of active edge that you've got, even though it's one-story, is better than, I, I think it's the best way that you can attempt it. I still have trouble with the drive-through, and I'd love to see that done in a different way, or go away altogether, but, you know, that's your business. I think, I, I support where you're going with this at this point in time and with the existing conditions of the corridor, you know, big uses like Wendy's and, I mean, the, the walkable street that we want is, is a long-term vision, and I think this is a short-term, kind of get in there and get something, activity going on that vacant site.
I'm going to generally echo everyone, everyone acknowledging the hard place you're in, I think we keep referencing places like Grandview Avenue, we keep referencing North Star, Clintonville-ish, right? And I think we, I think there's a lot of discomfort, Lance, I think you nailed it on the head, when, are they mutually exclusive, pedestrian and, and drive-through? And of course, every, every example we can, we can bring up at present mentally, any of us, is yes, that's uncomfortable, right? It's uncomfortable getting, parking your car and walking into the Wendy's that's over there on, on Avery Mirfield, right? So, I, I think first and foremost, across the board, that needs to be resolved one way or another, and unfortunately, I think at present, it means it, it's probably not the right spot for it, right? Because while I don't disagree with Mr. Way on, you know, we are a long way from this vision, we do want potentially this to suddenly become like Grandview, Grandview Avenue, right, as it develops, but it's going to take a bit, and to start with something and, and prime the energy so it starts rolling downhill, literally, isn't such a bad, isn't such a bad thing, right? But I don't know that the, put it this way, that energy, I'm not sure that it's a drive-through, right, relative to this. I will also say, kudos, kudos Myers fellas, the, the design is attractive, right? The material palette, the examples, everything's, everything's going in a good direction. I, I echo all that, I think the suggestions about, you know what I mean, goosing the pedestrian nature of it and pass-throughs and all sorts of stuff and is all right and appropriate. I, I will also, it's not our place necessarily, the deed restrictions is, is an interesting, is an interesting problem. I have to believe that the cards, right, you are playing is, is unfortunately, it's, you kind of probe Lowe's, you kind of probe the city, you kind of probe Lowe's, you kind of probe the city in, in a variety of ways, but at some point, as I'm, I'm sitting here thinking on that, ultimately, that is really, yeah, maybe, maybe they're a big corporation, maybe they got red tape, maybe they're, you know what I mean, we made a decision, we're sticking by it, and, you know, I mean, pound salt, right? But at the same time, they are a corporation and money talks, and so to the point of you bought a property, and boy, if you could buy the rest of the property, right, it's just economic, it's economic to you, it's economic to them, and they're not going to turn away a check, and so maybe the conversation hasn't been the right conversation yet, is, is what I, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything, maybe you've already gone down that path, maybe you've entertained it, maybe you've done the analyses, but, right, that, it's ju, that's just economics, they'll, they'll, they'll move on it, right? They, they don't really care, one way or another, unless they're, unless they're just trying to hold you shorter so that they can see the building.
Our, our issue with Lowe's is that they sold this out parcel 20 years ago, or however many years ago it was, they have zero, zero reason to want to do anything with this parcel, they already got their money out of it, they've run, and no, and we, the city, and now, you know, Crawford-Hoynes, since we purchased this site, we're stuck with what they did years ago, with zero incentive to focus on, on Dublin, Ohio and this little out parcel, or re-cashing anything that they've done in the past. So, it's, it's really easy to go down the path of, wouldn't it be great if we bought this site and the next site and the next site, and I, I love to do that, I'm always the one in my office that people are saying, stop, you know, stop, we, but, so I, I would love to do it, but in this case, we, we are having to, to deal with the, the situation that is in front of us with the information that the people who have the ability to make the decisions at Lowe's are telling us and making lemonade out of the lemons, which is this vacant site and eyesore right in the middle of an important corridor. And I'd like to, to challenge our group and ourselves to go back and figure out how we can satisfy all the requirements that we heard of tonight. I, I, I know that maybe you haven't been to a place where a, a drive-through is pedestrian, is part of a pedestrian-friendly project, I think we can do it, I think we've got the talent on our team, we built Bridge Park together, right? We can figure out a way to incorporate a pedestrian, a, a drive-through into a project in a way that has enough other pedestrian connectivity to it to, to make it be a successful project, and then heck, you can say, look what we did in Dublin, we figured out a way in a post-COVID world to have a drive-through and a project that doesn't, doesn't sacrifice the pedestrian, and let's try it. I, I'm, I'm up for doing that next month, if you guys are up for doing that, for us to go back to the drawing board and see what we can come back to you with, to, to show reinforcing the pedestrian is king concept within this, this project, and see if we can get there with, with it.
I guess, how about this, I'm all, I'm all for trying it, I, the, you know how this goes, it's a, it's a tall hurdle, right, like at present, there's skepticism, but I don't know that it's a problem if, what this, we're articulating the concern, happy to have a solution that sort of accommodates said concern, is what it comes down to. And by the way, Nelson, forgive me, I wasn't necessarily saying buy the next parcel, I was saying, right, Lowe's will accept your money if you say, hey, I want to, here's some money, will you waive the deed restrictions, right? Somebody in that organization will get a nice pat on the back, and they're, I'm sure they're a big organization, but somebody, somebody will take a check and...
Everyone would definitely take a check if it's big enough, we also have to be able to afford to build a building after we're done, which is...
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's where, that's where, that's not our place, it's, it's your, like, whatever your analyses, I don't know what, what this site could hold, but if you could double your square footage, what's that check to you, what's it worth to you to buy that extra square footage for yourself? I, I don't know what the answer is, I'm not advocating.
The push-pull that we get into there, just to throw another log on the fire, is now you need more parking spaces, which means you probably need structured parking, which means now you need a TIF to pay for the structured parking and, but, instead of other things elsewhere in Bridge Street District, so it becomes more and more complicated as, the further you go down, down the rabbit hole. We love to do that all the time, trust me, it's our job.
It's certainly not easy. I suppose we're, do we, yeah, I was going to say, do we have any public comments? I didn't ask openly in the audience?
And we don't have any, no, nothing submitted.
All right, so can we see our, we have, right, we need to see the motions.
Motion to approve the concept plan.
Oh, hold on, let's, let's re-review the, the conditions.
Well, and if I may, Mr. Yoder, are you asking for them to vote on this concept plan tonight or for tabling so you can address some of the comments?
Yeah, we should table it, because I think if we, if we take a vote tonight, we know how that's going to go, so we'll table it. I think we, give us an opportunity to go, go back and take your comments and incorporate them and, and see what we come back and go with.
Okay. Duly noted, do we... Do we, do we need to deal with these?
A motion to table.
Right.
Second.
Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Subalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Claire?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Subalak?
Yes.
And then likewise, Mr. Subalak associated with this, with this application is the combination. So we would need a motion to table that combination of preliminary and final.
Do I have a motion to table the combined approval of a PDP and an FDP?
She'll move. Second.
Ms. Beal?
Claire?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We'll do, we'll do it again. Case number 21-129 CP Concept Plan for 4012 West Dublin Grandview Road. This application is requested for the construction of a 14,600 square foot two-story mixed-use building. The 1.08 acres site is zoned Bridge Street District Office and is located northeast of the intersection of West Dublin Grandview Road with David Road. Chase, take us away.
Great, thank you and good evening. As was mentioned, this is a request for a review and approval of a concept plan for the construction of a two-story mixed-use building in the Bridge Street District. The concept plan is the first step in a three-step review and approval process. As a reminder, a concept plan is intended to outline the character and nature of the proposed development, including building massing, open space location and street network. Step two is the preliminary development plan and step three is the final development plan. The Bridge Street District Code provides the Planning and Zoning Commission with the latitude to approve the combination of steps two and three and the applicant is requesting that these be combined this evening. Staff is supportive of this request as the block and street network are largely already The site in question is highlighted in yellow on your screen. It contains two parcels totaling approximately one acre in size and is zoned Bridge Street District Office. Commission members may recall that a concept plan came before the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2020 for a similar proposal. At the time, the applicant was proposing an 11,000 square foot building, primarily one-story in height with a two-story tower element. That proposal had a similar site layout as the one before you this evening. These photos provide a bit of context to the existing conditions of the site. You can see that the site is undeveloped and relatively flat. There is a large tree stand on the eastern half of the site. The Bridge Street District Code establishes a hierarchy of street types. As mentioned with the previous case, West Dublin Grandville is a corridor connector and a principal frontage street. Banker and David are designated neighborhood streets. Before you now is the proposed site plan with north oriented to the right side of your screen. The applicant is proposing an approximately 14,500 square foot loft building, sighted in the southern one-third of the site. Approximately 400 square feet of open space is proposed on the west edge of the proposed building, whereas 290 approximately square feet are required. 53 parking spaces are provided, located centrally on the site. Based on the building size and uses proposed, 54 spaces are required. Therefore, staff is recommending that the applicant continue to work with us to address the shortage, which potentially could end up in a parking plan at a future date. Access to the site is provided on the north side of the site from Banker Drive. Two patios are proposed adjacent to the building, highlighted in red on your screen. Sidewalks are proposed along the David Road and Banker Drive frontages. And additionally, I'd like to point out that some of these infrastructure improvements are on a city-owned parcel. Therefore, staff is recommending that the applicant continue to work with us to ensure the most appropriate sighting for this infrastructure and that property line is indicated by the green line. Finally, there is a portion of an existing overhead utility easement on the east side of the site, which constricts building sighting as well as parking location. The applicant is proposing a loft building type, which is a permitted building type in the office district. This building type is required to be sighted within zero to 15 feet of the proposed, or sorry, the property line or right-of-way, right-of-way line. Additionally, the building is required to occupy 75% of the front property line width. With the preliminary development plan, a full building type analysis will be required to ensure code compliance or necessary waivers are requested. The applicant provided some renderings showing the proposed massing. So this is as viewed from West Dublin Grandville Road or from the south. You can see again, it's primarily a two-story massing with a one and a half story element and rooftop amenities. And then this is the proposed massing from the north or from Banker Drive. Here you begin to see that the primary entry from the parking lot is on this elevation. And additionally, you can see the rooftop amenity elements a little bit better here. Finally, this is the proposed massing from David Road or from the west. I'd like to point out that the proposed open space is visible in this rendering outlined in green on your screen. With this, the applicant has provided some architectural inspiration images. You'll notice that these buildings are contemporary in design with straight lines and flat roofs. These buildings utilize lots of glazing, have lots of transparency and also contain wood elements, metal paneling and masonry elements. Similarly, the applicant provided inspiration images for the proposed open space. You'll notice that these are largely hardscaped in nature with vegetation and seating elements This concept plan was reviewed against all applicable criteria and staff is recommending approval this evening with two conditions of the concept plan and approval of the request to combine the preliminary development plan with the final development plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have and the applicant team is also in attendance this evening. Thank you.
Questions at present for staff?
Just one, real quick one. Required building zone, zero to 15 foot. If it's not the building footprint, it can be patio space, it can be any sort of outdoor permanent structure, right?
Yeah, there are opportunities for patios or landscaping.
Right, which would move the building footprint back a little. The building footprint will be allowed to be back as long as you've got those spaces out front.
Potentially, yep.
Good, thank you.
So the, the property that you identified that's along Banker Drive that is owned by the city, this goes back to some of my earlier questioning earlier in the evening about the future of Banker Drive and would it follow that alignment with the city just? So there's this piece of land that's left over right now. So I assume the intention is, I, I don't know what the city would do with it unless it was a future realignment of Banker Drive. So I guess the question is, it would be terrible to have that space just unused and left over of whether there's some kind of way to incorporate that into this project as opposed to just continue to treat it as extra property.
Yeah. And at some point in the future, that section of roadway would likely be improved to a Bridge Street District street type composition. Of course, staff would, we, the city would ensure that the appropriate right-of-way is provided in that length of roadway in that parcel that you refer to. But it is also a neighborhood street. So in the hierarchy of street types, the activity and building, it makes sense to front the West Dublin Grandville frontage.
So I'm assuming that Banker Drive is, it continues to the west. I mean, that, that looks like it's, that is a city street and it's, it's probably likely to stay. So I guess the question is, the intent of that leftover piece of land, I just don't want to leave it there and not make sure that we're considering it. If Banker Drive is gonna stay roughly where it is, it might be wider, but it's certainly not gonna use all that land.
Yeah, so we would have further discussions with what Banker Drive would look like on that parcel, but likely the existing section to the west, which is a public street within right-of-way, would be extended across or basically improved to be a similar condition on the city-owned property. So we would also be working with the developer as far as sidewalk location, should that be placed on the city-owned property so it's not just pushed back into their site and you have this awkward green space? So those are details that we would work with the developer on.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this portion of Banker is the same, it's owned privately, it's, this part hasn't been dedicated and accepted? I was kind of confused on, you know, where the public right-of-way and accepted Banker portion is. It seemed like it, it went right up to that future Village Parkway and then after that, it's private.
Yeah, so Banker Drive has somewhat of an odd configuration as you go from west to east. So starting at Shamrock to the west, I think Chase is gonna pull up an aerial so that you can see this. So starting at Shamrock, kind of at the west boundary is within existing public right-of-way and it's a public street. So if you look up on the screen, so as you move, so Shamrock, where you see the 161 ellipse there to the west, that is Shamrock Boulevard running north and south. So where you see Banker Drive labeled, that is existing public right-of-way, that's a public street. So as you move along Banker Drive to the east, where we have the site outlined in yellow, that is David Road. So that, that is kind of the limits of the public right-of-way. So as you go further to the east, basically directly north of that box, that yellow box, that is a city-owned parcel that has a street within there. So as part of the, you know, move, if this project were to move forward, we would have those discussions about what does that street look like? Likely it would look similar to the section to the west, which is a public street, but also the discussion of where should the sidewalk be located? It likely would be on the city-owned parcel so you don't have this excessively wide grass area between Banker Drive and the sidewalk, but those are details that we would work through as the project would move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to, just to repeat it back to you, this portion of Banker Drive is city?
Correct. On a city-owned parcel. It is not currently right-of-way, but it is, it is on a city-owned parcel.
Got it. So it's headed in the right direction?
Correct.
Got, got it. And the gist is, I, I mean, there's a clear material change on this aerial right there. You can see the Lowe's asphalt black to, I would assume is concrete. That's probably around where the construction changes to city, city agreeable.
Yeah, so the aerial looks like maybe they resurfaced recently, it's just darker black top, but that is asphalt. But you're right, where the, kind of the northeast point there on that yellow box delineates the end of the city-owned parcel and as you move further to the east, that's on Lowe's parcel. So that's considered a private drive currently.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions at present? Fellas have a presentation? Want to piggyback? Do we, thad question, do I have to have them do name and address each time?
I mean, they don't have to get up and give their address each time. They don't even have to do their address case by case, but we should have their names so that we, for purposes of the minutes, can document that they're coming, you know, back up to the podium and identify who's speaking.
Got it.
I'm still Brian McNally.
Thank you, Brian.
With Myers &amp; Associates. Yeah, so if you want to go back to the site plan, would that be okay? Just wanted to start off by saying there's no deed restrictions on the site, so.
Thank you for that.
Okay. So hopefully it's a little easier, easier discussion. So we're looking at a two-story building separating into two different tenant spaces. One tenant space, obviously being a little bit larger, is taking up two stories, 67,000 or 6,700 square, square feet on the first floor, a little bit smaller second floor. One thing that you don't notice on the site plan, and I'm not sure if you can see it in some of the acts on it, is the locations of the rooftop terraces that we're providing off the second floor space. So on tenant A that you see on the plan, rooftop terrace would be on the west side, which on this plan is plan north. Sorry, the plan disappeared up here. We also have a tenant B space that is a, we'll say like a retail, thinking food and, food and beverage type use, eating, drinking, a little bit smaller space, although it is slightly beyond the 20% limit per overall floor area. So we may work with the square footage of that or look at doing a conditional use for being slightly over on, on size for a restaurant space relative to the size of the square footage of the building. It's a single-story tenant space for tenant B, but the entire floor area that you see here is also represented in the roof plan as rooftop terrace. So that's all terrace up there. There's a, a separate stair access that you see to the east side of the site where you see a large patio. So there will be separate access to the rooftop terrace at tenant B. What we've also done is provided an interior elevator lobby with interior stair access as well, or sorry, the interior stair access is for tenant A only, but the shared elevator lobby gets you up to both levels, either rooftop terrace for tenant B or a second story for tenant A. From tenant A, you can walk out onto the rooftop terrace to the, to the west side of the site. Two-story building primarily. We wanted to definitely position it, obviously along Dublin Grandville Road, definitely engage that, that street facade. One thing we didn't highlight when we were talking about the site layout is the sidewalk in the front is primarily along the building facade, very small buffer, but walk-ups to each one of the building entries. So we definitely envision that active engagement for pedestrians along West Dublin Grandville. If you look at, can you scroll to the front facade? Just wanted to show, you know, the view from West Dublin Grandville. You can see it's, it's a, it's a two-story shape. The, the box that you see on the left side of the bottom image is a double-height space. So that's a big open volume, definitely be able to see some activity on the interior, interior of that space. The, the double, the, the double height that you see for one, two, three, four different columns going across in the middle of the building is all two-story space, but, but all storefront. One thing we're looking at doing in that area is playing with the Molyon size to create some kind of texture effect, so it's not just, just glass. So there's definitely a textural feel to that. But we're interested in seeing how we can kind of open the interior out towards the exterior so you can kind of see, see, see what's going on. Maybe it's something with color on the inside walls, but definitely something interesting is happening there. You can see towards the bottom right-hand side, the, we'll say the restaurant space, not sure yet, but definitely rooftop terrace. You're starting to see there, we're looking at some kind of screening or green roof look. We definitely wanted to open that up, be able to see some activity up there as you're walking or driving down Dublin Grandville, so definitely engage the streetscape a little bit. Open patio in that tenant B space as well. Open space, open public space that we saw in one of their renderings, that we're providing some bench-type seating. That happens to be the mechanical room of the tenant A space on the inside of that wall, so it, it lends itself to a, like a blank canvas, so we can envision some, maybe a fountain or some, some plants or, you know, something. So we can envision some, maybe a fountain or some, some plants or, you know, something against that wall. But definitely looking to make it interesting. And then here you can see the rooftop terrace above. We're starting to show some, some material elements, not necessarily in color, but we're looking at some slat wall dropping down from the terrace above, coming down to meet the sidewalk below.
Questions for Brian and team?
Could we go back to the, that last slide about the outdoor, the open space? I, I took it from, I think what you said, you used a blank canvas, that wall is. I just see, I just think that is the last place on the site I would put an open space and put a place for people to gather. There's nothing happening there. And it just seems, that's the one thing that caught my attention. The first thing is why would, why, why is that? And I, and I was, I was, again, I think you, you said why you did it and I guess that's why you did it, because you thought it was kind of like an art piece or something. But it seems like if that's going to be an open space, it should be on a place around the building where there's some activity. It just seems like a dead space on a side street with nothing happening. So one comment. And then the other thing that jumped out at me was the, the rendering of the front along 161. The, I guess it'd be the entrance to the office building. It just seemed that there was an opportunity there to do something special. It just seems very underplayed, very not like inviting, not welcoming. It seems that that's the one place where you want to punch on 161 and say, hey, here I am, welcome, you know, whatever it is. So my two comments.
So when we first saw this come through, we're pretty excited about it. The inspiration pictures are great and I still think this is going to be an exciting piece. I agree with Mr. Way. It still reads to me as if it's an office building on the street, on the 161. You have great opportunity with this restaurant, which shrunk. And I don't know if that's code or not. It was a 4,000 square foot, but now it's 3,100. But I'd like to see it be bigger. I'd like to see that energy that you have at the rooftop and the patios alongside more towards the front of, of the building. I think when I drive by, we'll never get anybody to stop if, if there's nothing to stop for. So I'd like to see that move to the front of the building. I agree with him. I look at the inspiration pictures that you had in here of, would you throw those back up, Chase? Those inspiration pictures, it was on the bottom left-hand side. That one on the bottom left-hand side. If you're going to have a wall of glass, let's have some breakdown from the front to the street where you feel as if you can approach that wall of glass, that you could stay there. That wall of glass reads to me just very strong and, and, and not pedestrian-friendly. It's more like you would see in a downtown office building. It's just that you'll see what's going on inside, but you, you're not included in that. So we're, we just keep going back to this sense of what makes you feel comfortable as you walk by it that you might want to linger. So I think I would, you know, would really encourage you to really take a look at that piece in the entrance way and, and see if you can find a way to, and lighting might also do it. I mean, there's great opportunities for wonderful lighting in the evening for this that invites you to it. Like, like we see at Piata in the new Chase Bank that looks like a little jewel box now. It, it changes the way you feel about the building. And then in, in the daytime, if you can create this kind of a warmth on that front face and move those open spaces towards the front. This is, I think it's a medical spa kind of a thing. I go there, places like this. And I will tell you that I like being pampered. And I think that offering those spaces around it and, and you see it inside, it feels good inside. And then you may want to sit outside with a girlfriend and have something to eat at the restaurant there. If you can, you know, just put a lot of more energy into creating that feeling on the front. I think with the uses of materials that you're using for inspiration, I think you'll get really, really close to feeling great about this.
I have an idea since we're, since this is work session, it's not a, not a busy planning commissioner meeting. Can you go back to the site plan? Just one of the other comments that Kim had mentioned. I think that we could, we might be able to kill two birds with one stone here. So, you know, parking spaces are 60 feet or 62 feet or whatever they are, they are here. And then two rows of those, and then you got a sidewalk, and then you got a building, and then you got a sidewalk. Just to your point about the, the frontage and the RBZ, trying to stay within that frontage. If you, if you look at the front of the site and you chase it all the way to the back, you see that there's the strip at the rear of the property, which is the 49-foot grass strip. And then we're tied up front, right? There's a city-owned parcel, not right-of-way. Maybe we can do a swap and flip space out to the frontage. Take the building, drag it, drag it off of 161 a little bit, put some of that space that's currently in the back out front, so we'll leave plenty for whatever that right-of-way would be. But if we have 49 feet between the edge of the curb, curb to curb, there's plenty of room to put a 60-foot right-of-way through there, 65 or whatever, and move some of that space up. And if we trade, we give the city, I don't know, whatever it is, a quarter of an acre of open space and we absorb a quarter of an acre in the back, maybe we can just do a swap that way.
Yeah, I'm not allowed to give away city land, but.
You are in council.
But I definitely think that there's ways to. I definitely think that there's ways that you could, yeah. There's different ways that you can do that. Also, I just really quickly, and I don't want to take the commissioners, other commissioners' time. But on the backside, where once again, Mr. Way has said this so many times, there are different and, and better ways to address these parking lots. And you can create a pedestrian friendliness from Banker Drive with sidewalks that go to the back of your building without having to have these little islands of trees. There are, I mean, you can create more of a garden of trees and pedestrian friendliness through them than the way we have always done these parking lots. Because no one wants to walk through them, ever. And so if we're really going to make it, if you're going to go to the effort of doing this beautiful building and creating these wonderful spaces, make it walkable all the way around it. So those are my thoughts. I would condition relocating the patio spaces. I would condition developing the middle of that building to be, to, to work more towards that streetscape pedestrian friendliness sort of thing. And, and then also, you know, thinking about, I wouldn't condition this parking area because I, I know that you have some limitations, but I would strongly encourage that we look at a different design for parking and pedestrian connectivity.
If, if I can convince you to give away more city land, you could probably reorient that parking lot a little bit too. So that, that's something we can, we are close on parking. As you know, there's a 4-1 space short. As we pull everything and push everything, we may come back with, with a request to eat into that green median in the back a little bit more. Get the parking we need, but also provide the green space in the parking lot and out on 161 so the whole project gets to where it needs to be.
Thad, and maybe Jenny, something like that, right? That, that green space that is in the back. And maybe it's a, maybe it's a question for engineering. I guess I'm, do we have plans for all that?
No, so we currently don't have plans for any kind of improvements on Banker Drive. So that's just something we'd have to look at as far as what a future section of Banker Drive would look like there and what space is left over for any potential development opportunities. So those are things, details we just, we would just have to work through.
And I think maybe to Jane's point jokingly, that's the city council action. So this would have to then be elevated to city council in some aspect that they would have to be agreeable to getting rid of some of our land. Not that that's not possible, we've just not had that conversation.
Well, I don't know that I'm necessarily doing that, but at, but I think we, without going to city council, could, I mean, if we had a better understanding of a future plan there, could we waive a five-yard, five, five-foot minimum rear yard setback?
Yeah, I mean, with, with, there's a zoning requirement that's happening on the parcel in which the applicant owns, then yes, modifications could be made. There's, again, there's nothing saying we can't investigate further. Is there an opportunity to do something with that city-owned parcel that gets to what Mr. Way is suggesting? I just can't, I don't have the authority to make the decision.
And what that does is it changes, you have to change the property line so that they have the ability to shift things back, right? That's the key to this, right? That's where the love is going to happen.
I mean, if I take that, if I take that five yard, five feet and put it on the other side of the building, right? Like, it might not solve the parking lot, but at least it starts to put square, feet where we want feet, right? Or space where we want space more around the building in lieu of, you know, adding on to a 50-foot green belt right now.
Yeah, I think we could look at it both ways. Probably the best solution is if we do cross the line. But it's nice to have, that, that five feet would be pretty important up on 161 for sure. Just even if that, if that partial solution gets us there. So as you're thinking about what conditions you want to put on the concept plan, it's something we would certainly investigate, pushing it to, you know, coming back, asking for a, a side yard setback and/or a property trade, however you want to document it. But we're all about it, I think it could make a lot of sense.
Yeah, and if I might just kind of ask where we're going tonight, are you hoping to obtain a vote, given, given this conversation, are you hoping to obtain a vote on the concept plan this evening? Or are you thinking perhaps of table?
Sounds like we're coming back next week anyway. No, we, we could actually, if this, this one seems a lot closer. If we can write the correct conditions for it and I think we can probably encapsulate these things to take a vote on it and then come back with, with answers to these questions at the preliminary and final development plan. I think I'd like to go that route if we can on this one. If it's going to put too much pressure on, on planning commissioner, on staff, we can, we can table this because we will be back and we'll just, we'll handle it at the next meeting.
Let's, I think. And the reason that I'm asking is just because as we're contemplating perhaps, you know, some kind of land swap versus waiver of the setback, I don't necessarily want to write those conditions on the fly here.
I hear you, that's going to be pretty complicated.
And that changes the review process actually as well.
Right.
If a development agreement is required, then council approves the concept plan. So that adds another complicating factor.
Right.
So how about this? Let's, let's circle back to this conversation. I mean, at this point, we are, you said it. I mean, it's comments for us, but you're, you're picking up. And maybe it's a little more of a sort of work session at present, good, better and different. And then we can decide what, what transpires on this side, how we, how we digest it. And then if we can build, to your point, if we can build conditions to that or not.
Well, and I am saying, and of course, it's ultimately the commission's decision along with the applicant in terms of tabling. But I would rather not be writing conditions on the fly this evening about, you know, whether to go into development agreement. I have no idea whether council has any particular interest in that or not since this is, this seems like it's sort of the product of brainstorming this evening, which is great. But my two cents would be give Mr. Yoder and his team all the feedback that he wants in terms of what you ultimately want to see on the site, table this. And then we can start that conversation over, you know, whether this becomes a development agreement and ultimately a council decided application.
Fully noted.
And I'm guessing that engineering still needs time to figure out what the right-of-way needs to be so that we know how much space we might have to work with. So I don't think we can figure that out tonight.
Yeah, well, and I.
That's correct.
I, I think it's probably, probably true also that while we're sitting here saying it's a possibility, right? Like, we, we still got to believe in, work with staff and believe in that plan that this is, the setback is. We got to see it, I suppose, what it comes down to. Okay. But we, we can continue with comments and then, and then get there. Yes, I think that's where we're headed, is eventually a motion to table. Lance?
I would just echo some of the other comments. The, the one area that sort of jumped out on me, to me, was the one area that didn't jump out on me, which was the, the public space. It's like, it seems like you checked the box. And apparently the, the public space is, is greater than required. But boy, you managed to put it in the least attractive part of the property and then put a big wall behind it, so you're really tucked away. Even, it, it feels like you're next to the dumpster, even though the dumpster is way over there. So, you know, my one comment is if that could be moved to a more desirable part of the, of the plan and, you know, as close to 161 as possible, I think it'd be great.
Yeah, I just have a couple of brief comments. I, when I looked at this picture this morning, page eight and nine, I thought, wow, it's kind of drifted away from the Dublin look. It, it looks like it's Dreyfusian glass. And, and the, the restaurant tacked on the side. I wonder if that could be integrated more into the facade and, and, I don't know what materials. I assume that's what it is, right? I don't see, the Dreyfusian glass probably, right? Yeah, and I, I, you know, this is on 161. And I know we keep saying, well, everything's exciting. It's, you guys are, are, I know you're doing your best, but, but I, I, that was my impression. Also, the parking lot, we have so many Cs of parking lot. And several of my colleagues have mentioned it. And, and Mr. Way's suggestions with clumps of trees. In that area, it would, might be neat to have a, a, a path from the, from the back street and with tree line with, you know, Bradford pears or something, or Cleveland pears. That, something that, that people feel invited to walk from one street to the other. Instead of maybe clumping them, but have a tree-lined street, you know, tree-lined path, tree-lined path going and so on. And, and as I said, I, when I looked at this, I know, I, I love the, 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 the mansionary pictures. But I didn't think this looked like that. Maybe it's just me, but, but I, I think that, I, I know, I see the effort, but, but I would love to see the restaurant integrated. I'd like to see the facade more interesting and, and, and more welcoming and, you know, same old, same old, you know, first of all, so.
Just one last thing. One of the things that I, that I would just ask of you, of the architect, is just a question. One of the things that I find interesting about the inspirational pictures, and I, and I'm not seen here, so I don't have an architect's eye. So I asked this question for, to, to help me understand and learn a little bit. There is a lot of interrupt, I guess, there's a lot of intersection between some of these, these awnings that go in a, in a horizontal way against, you know, strong vertical elements of glass and, and entryways. I don't see that as much here. I see the vertical elements, but I, and I see some, some horizontal elements, but they're not strong. And I'm just wondering if that is what we, we're missing when we see the, when we see the inspirational pieces? And it's not, maybe not just necessarily the horizontal, it's all of those. And I know these are white box and you're not quite there yet, but. The changing of the textures with the overhangs that are lattice or the, or the lattice against on the, on the slower, some of these lower pictures. There's a lot of softness created by these little open lattice spaces in these, in these big canopies. And I think they seem a little, and maybe it's difficult to see them here. If that's happening here with that, these strong sort of horizontal lines with great canopies and mixture of materials, if that's happening, that's great. I can't see it here, but I guess I'd encourage you to make sure that you have it here.
Yeah, and I think at, at this point in the development, we're not showing the final renderings.
Right.
I mean, we happened to show it on the last project, but like I said, that's not typically what we would come into the concept plan and, and show because, I mean, we're just not there yet. But it's definitely something we're looking at and that's the whole point of these inspiration images. And we're looking at those, those lattice pieces as more like a finished material, as like an inspiration of what the finished material could be. We're not showing the finished material yet.
I get that. I'm just wondering if some of these horizontal pieces, like you would see on page 11 where the car is, if, they don't seem as strong to me as they do in your inspiration pieces. It seems as if there's more verticality, more, you know, glass and solid than there is this intersection of horizontal. intersection of horizontal, which makes your inspirational pieces look so interesting to me. So that's just my thoughts.
I'm, I'm going to be excited to show you the final renderings the next-
I, I just had one comment that kind of takes off of James, is that when I looked at it, and I'm not an architect, but the, the overhang and the, the porches and all the things, they look thin to me. In other words, it doesn't look like it could be there for 100 years. And you, I've seen contemporary that, that, that has a lot of vertical and horizontal lines, but the, 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 the lines are heavy. Like, for example, the main horizontal line going through from the building, it looks like it's, from here, it looks like it's eight inches thick or something, you know, and, 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 so if it looked like it was three feet thick, if you look at some of the, the other contemporary buildings throughout the city, they, it looks like it's going to be there longer. Does that make sense to you? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so, they could be hollow for all I care, but, 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 but it's the look that I meant. And also, as I said, I'll repeat that, I, when I saw the restaurant tacked on there, I thought, it looks like that was an afterthought. And you're the architect, I'm not, I'm, I'm sure you know what you're doing, but that's what it looked like to me, and I think, I'd like to see it like it's really welcoming, it's part of the building. You're going to the medical building, but gee, I, I think I'll stop in for a cup of coffee, you know? So, that's it.
Real quick, question, and maybe this is, maybe this is engineering as much as anything else, the 37-foot, I guess I'm going to the easement that's on the east side. Is that, I guess I'm, is it a utility easement? Is it encroachable in any way, shape, or form?
So that is a private utility easement, so that's really, the developer needs to work with that utility company to see the stipulations of the easement and what's allowed as far as an encroachment. So that's a similar condition on the other side of the property line from the previous case that was heard earlier this evening. We'd have to look at that easement to see what kind of stipulations there are as far as what kind of encroachments can exist within there.
Can I just clarify? The 37 feet is not the easement, that's just the dimension from the proposed road to the parking lot. So-
Got it.
Yeah, there, right, there is a utility easement for the overhead electric line.
But it's not 37 feet wide, I just wanted to make that clarification, just.
Yeah, but it's, so what, the 37 feet, I guess I'm, I'm trying to, then, if that's the case, understanding, is there more space on that side of the parcel?
Yeah, let me bring up the site plan really quickly. The 37 feet encompasses the entirety of that easement on this parcel, or the site, rather, and then the additional seven feet is just, so 37 feet is how far that pavement line is, excuse me, from the property line.
So the easement is 30 feet, and then the seven-
Easement's 30 feet.
Further, right.
Can I just clarify that?
The 37 feet that we're showing was just to give an indication of how far the defined parking lot would be off of the potential future Village Parkway expansion, just so we can help you determine the type of landscape screening that we're going to need for the parking lot. But as far as the easement, you can see the easement labeled there, it's roughly 30, 30 feet off of that, that roadway. And the requirement with the easement is we can't have the building sitting at or beyond easement, but we can have parking, from my understanding, right?
Yeah, what I want to add to that is that, I don't know which, so American Electric Power recently reran, they got rid of the, the ugly rusty, like, robot towers, as we call them, and they, they put monopoles in. When they did that, they took another seven, I think it was six or seven feet along that edge, so that, that actually might be the, the right, the new right-of-way. And, sorry, we'll, we'll come back knowing exactly where that is, but I think it, maybe it used to be 30, and now it's 37, it's some oddball dimension. They took an extra like six or seven feet up through that, through that zone, so. We'll, we'll clarify that when we come back.
Well, and then, separate question, and maybe I'm just trying to find it, right, so I, I don't know that we, oh, no, you do, all right, property line, okay.
And it was not rectilinear either, it kind of ran at an angle, so we'll, we'll make sure that that gets correctly shown on here. It's just, it's very new. As they reran those, those lines, they took just a little sliver, additional sliver of property.
Got it. Well, and maybe it's a question as much for, I guess, with this, if this comes back with some consideration on the backside, I, I guess, I, I'd be curious about how we, as the city, understand this all to shake out long, long-term, i.e., right, are we putting in place an easement here that we know is going to stay green for a long time, and will, by the way, applying then a setback off of that green space too? Because those types of things.
I think the other thing that needs to be clarified is what is the public right-of-way that's being reserved there? I don't see any designation of right-of-way line versus the, I see there's a edge of curb, or a proposed edge of curb there, right? So I assume that relates to a right-of-way, and then there's dimensional things off of that, right? So I just think, if, if, to your question, if you're trying to figure all that out, we should see that all dimensioned correctly.
Some, some of that stuff relaxes and affects, you know, I mean, the, the design is what it comes down to, so, yeah.
Yeah, and we can certainly work with the applicant to make sure that those are labeled appropriately with a future submittal.
Got it. Thank you. I'll try and be, I'll try and piggyback on everybody else and, and be quick here. I, I do think, right, the possibility of finding five feet to put somewhere on the building could be really, really fruitful for this, could alleviate the problem of, you know, the, the open space is kind of in a goofy spot, right? I applaud you for trying, it's adjacent to sidewalks, people would wander by and sit down, but it's kind of also a kind of harsh spot, so an extra five, five feet around the building suddenly puts that, gives you options there. I, there was a lot of chatter amongst the commissioners about potentially activating the restaurant a little bit more. I think that five, same five feet might really help that situation as well. My gut tells me that that patio wants to wrap around the front, is what it comes down to. Wrap, right, and, and come around the corner, right? So a couple more feet, and suddenly you're in business on that type of stuff. I don't disagree, there was also comments about, I'm going to say, the, the main entry of the, the larger tenant space. There's something, most of your massing, I, I, I understand where you're heading, it feels good. I don't know that the massing at the corner is, right, that, that entry and/or the corner, somehow that sequencing is, is not, you know, I mean, it's a personal opinion, but it, it feels like it needs help a little bit. I do think Ms. Fox, in particular, made comments about the big wall of glass, which I applaud you, I do think in your inspiration images, I see how you're drawing over a precedent and, in sort of the irregular mullions, right? I think it could be really attractive. I don't disagree with you that you have opportunity then to think through how you play with those mullions a little bit. I, I know I, I thought I heard Brian, you say something about thicknesses on those, but I, I think there's also, you know how it is, those, those mullions are just aluminum caps, and you can get like those 12-inch thin projections that come off a part of it. And of course, if you started to do something like that and activate just your horizontals, suddenly that wall kind of dances in a, in a really interesting way, it could be kind of fun. I, I also, I think Ms. Fox also mentioned that, right, the one example you have back in the, it, it kind of has a Mesoian quality to it, right? It's elevated a, a plinth or two, and the steps are going up to it, and it's kind of nice in that regard. Of course, I, I don't know that, you know, you have grades you have to deal with, you don't want to make it a problem for, for handicap accessibility, right? But there's something to, I think, that approach, that on the street side, that could be nice. And maybe that's just, maybe that's just recognizing that there could be, if you gain space, right, some really appropriate version or interesting kind of, you know, maybe it's a long sort of open space along that side, and I don't know, planters and seeding planters and those types of things. I'd, I'd defer you, you all on it, but I think there's something to that, that's in front of the glass, that starts to draw you to it. I applaud the thinking, and I, I think it's spot-on about where you're going with, maybe it's color inside the building that sort of activates it and becomes interesting. I, I feel like someone else made a comment too about, maybe there's, you know, that, that big mass is going to be, become prominent, so maybe it's, it is thinking about lighting and not, not just, you know, not just downlights, or not just uplights, but like, do you ribbon around it with like a line or something in a really neat way? And so the image of it at night when we all pass it becomes also how we imagine it during the day, right? Like, if it's a, I'm not advocating red line or something, you get it. That's, I'm, I'm open to, relative to this, there's a lot of nice moves. I, I like your material palette, your imagery is, is good. I do think a lot of Warren's concerns will be alleviated once you get into the point where you're actually detailing those types of things, if you, if you honor what you have there. I am open to, you heard it a couple of times, but I'm saying it, saying it verbatim, I am open to entertaining, relaxing that five-yard setback in particular, right, and redeploying that square footage elsewhere in a more meaningful way for all of us. And, and there's always the concern that the parking lots are parking lots, do what you can. That's my comment. Relative to all that, we're, I, I think we're, there's a lot to study. We're uncomfortable trying to write conditions about some of those, some of those items without doing said study.
Well, and as I said, ultimately, if there were to be a development agreement with respect to this property, it would be up to council to approve the concept plan and the subsequent planning components of this package. I presume as well that engineering will have to, you know, figure out some kind of at least tentative engineering plan, to figure out where they ultimately will want the edge of that right-of-way to be on Banker Drive, make sure that they have all the room that they need. So I think that the best thing to do tonight is to table, and then everybody can convene offline about that.
Assume you are square with that?
I think that's-
Do we have a motion to table?
Motion to table the concept plan. Second. Second.
Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
The grant?
Yes.
The judgeman?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Your snare?
Yes.
And like with the last case, we also would want a motion to table the request to combine the PDP and FDP.
Motion to table the combining of the preliminary development plan with the final development plan. Second.
Ms. Beal?
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Supalak?
Yes.
The press.
Yes.
Thank you, fellows.
Let me, let me catch up now. Case number four and five, is this, forgive me, is this four, just four and five? Not four, five, and six? Right Way Corporate Park at 4420 Emerald Parkway, case number 21-101Z rezoning, and 21102PP preliminary plot, and 21-103FP final plot. The following two applications will be read, read in together. I already did this. 101Z rezoning, this application is a request for the rezoning of two parcels from restricted suburban residential district to suburban office and institutional district. The 9.01 acre site is northwest of the intersection of Emerald Parkway with Riverside Drive. Case 21-102PP preliminary plat and 21103FP final plat. This application is a request for the subdivision of a 7.35 acre lot to establish two open space reserves and one public right-of-way. The site is northwest of the intersection of Emerald Parkway and Riverside Drive. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Supalak, and good evening, commissioners. And if it pleases the commission, I have essentially one presentation that will address all of these items for you. So to begin with, this request comes to us from the Economic Development Division. Ms. Colleen Gilger is here tonight as our applicant. The, the goal is to create a shovel-ready site for development. And the picture that you see before you is the site as we're going to be talking about tonight. It is at the northeast corner, actually, of Riverside Drive and Emerald Parkway. You'll note the proximity to I-270, and the two lots on the south side are the area that will be rezoned, or is proposed to be rezoned. Ferris Wright Park extends to the north up to Bright Road, and that just gives you a little bit of context of where we are. So again, the current zoning is R1, Restricted Suburban Residential, and their request is to go to S0, which is Suburban Office and Institutional. It would be approximately nine acres that would be rezoned for the Right Way Corporate Park. And again, this is just the southern portion of the site that is outlined before you. This rezoning request is in conformance with both the future land use map and the thoroughfare plan, which are both part of the community plan. The rezoning criteria is met for standard zone districts, and staff is recommending approval for the rezoning. Moving along to both the preliminary plat and the final plat. To talk a little bit more about the plating in detail, again, we are creating a development lot in the southern portion of the area, the site. It would be about nine acres in total. With that, we are also creating Reserve A to preserve some woods and slope. There will be a landscape easement, a cul-de-sac bulb right-of-way would be dedicated, and Reserve B would be created for Ferris Wright Park. Looking at a little bit more detail on the plat, this is just the development area. And on the west side, again, we see Reserve A, which is to preserve woods and steep slopes. There are no disturb areas to accommodate a stream that runs just off-site. The development lot is in the middle, as you can see. The right-of-way creates a bulb, a necessary bulb for Right Way to complete that cul-de-sac. And then on the east side is a landscape and sign easement, and that creates a bit of a buffer with the residential area just to the east. All preliminary and final plat criteria have been met with this application. And our recommendation for both the preliminary plat and the final plat is approval with one condition, it's the same condition for each, and this is just a minor technical opportunity, should something pop up between now and taking this request to city council, that we can make minor changes. This is a standard condition that you'll see on a lot of plats that we have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you go back to, I guess, where, we don't have a, I guess I'm concerned about the, the trees and the slope. Not concerned, I'm just trying to understand how wide that is, because I think I mentioned to staff earlier that I found on dub discovery that it didn't seem as if Reserve A encompassed most of the woods and slope. most of the woods and slope. And maybe it doesn't need to. I just am trying to understand what is the, the area of Reserve A and its width from Riverside Drive over to the lot line? And I'm having a hard time looking at a satellite view versus this, this drawing. And I'm just, I don't know if, if somebody can help me with that. I know that it looks, it looks pretty good size, but it would be more helpful to understand just what that looked like in comparison to a satellite image of that, of that amount of woods that we're maintaining.
It's the tree line. If you look at the, the tree line.
But it doesn't measure that way. If you, if you measure it on dub discovery, to the, to the edge of the tree line, the edge of the, and it, maybe it does, but when I measure it on here, I, I get a measurement of, if I just take from the, from the road, depends, like midway, from the road to the edge of the tree line on satellite, is 286.7 feet. But if I look at, but if I, but if I look at this and, and what is listed here, it doesn't seem that big. So I may be wrong, I'm just questioning, because I believe that this is a good, good thing to do. I'm just, I just want to understand where that tree line stops and starts, that's all, and whether or not that's part of the Reserve A. That's my question.
Happy to answer that, Ms. Fox. Excuse me. So, I don't know, you can't see my cursor, but there is a distinct line, kind of, hmm, maybe a fifth of the way across that bottom southern to be zoned portion. And that does coincide with Reserve A? And our best guess is that it, it's about 230 feet wide?
Mm-hmm. That's all I'm asking, because if, if I were to measure, and the reason I ask that is because on this, it gives me 93 foot here at the bottom, and then this was, I did not, because I can't measure this, this is not, is not, I was no way to measure this for me. So I'm just wondering if this, I'm measuring this at 286 foot, it's sort of a widest width here. And if that's the case, wonderful. I'm just, was, if it's at the tree line, great.
Yeah, so I did go back after the discussion and verified, so the dimensions that are shown on the plat are correct. So when you see that 96 feet that are listed there, that is the bearing for the tangent along the right of way there. So there's also a label, I think it says C10 within parentheses T. So if you look at the table on the top left, that's basically a curve, ever so slight, but there's a, a length there that you would add to the 96 feet. So that, I guess the, the length of the Reserve A is wider than the 96 feet. There's that additional curve from that table that gets added in.
I figured that was probably true, it just didn't seem like, and I know you tried to explain this to me once already.
Right.
But I just wanted to be sure that we were just at that tree line. And if that's the case, I'm perfectly satisfied with that. Okay.
And then just looking at the aerial, so if you look, see the, the larger portion to the west there, so you see the yellow line that's going north and south, kind of bisecting the larger areas. So if you're looking at the, the left area in yellow there, you can see there's kind of a distinct line where there's a darker shade. That's really where that reserve line on the plat is shown. So the reserve line doesn't go all the way where that yellow line is.
Right. No, and are those, are those two lots? Is that why you have a line on there?
Yes, the yellow line on the screen is representing existing lot lines. So we're basically picking up that lot line, or that yellow line that you're seeing on the screen, going north and south and shifting it to the west to basically see where the, the color is changing from dark to lighter.
That's, that's, that's exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Mark? So I, I have a bigger question. Do we really need office space, office on this site? We have a park that's there. We have this historic element. You have a subdivision to the east, you have the elementary school. It seems like, and then there's a, there's a lot of land that I think is zoned office already. Is that correct? Going to the east on Emerald Parkway? Isn't there, isn't that planned for office development?
It, it, excuse me, yes, I believe so according to the community plan.
It's currently zoned residential, but future land use shows it as, right.
Yeah, I'm thinking that land use plan shows that it's.
Right, as does for this site as well.
Yeah, I know, I know that. And, and then the property to the north of this, that, where it's written major arterial, is that site, do you know what that site is, zone? To the north of the screen, of the water, the stream?
That's, that is all the R1 zone as well. And it's identified as parks and open space in the community plan.
Yeah. So, so, you know, the, that, that corner of Riverside Drive and Emerald Parkway is absolutely precious and, you know, happy that that's going to be reserved and not built upon. You've got the stream that is a really interesting little open space connection that leads to the river. So there's a lot of environmental stuff with that. And then you have this historic park and this investment that's been made in the parking and all that, that, which, which is relatively new. I don't know when it was done, but I know it's, hasn't always been there. And I remember seeing it and go, oh, wow, that's really neat. This seems, this little piece of seven acres just seems like all of a sudden it's an island. And I'm just asking the question, do we really need that precious little seven acres for additional office space? Or could we preserve the whole thing as open space related to the historic nature of the circle, of the, what is it called? I wrote it down. What's the historic thing called? The?
Oh, like the mound, there's mounds in there.
Ed Ferris Wright.
Ferris Wright Park.
So that.
Hi. Colleen Gilger, Economic Development Director. Yes, we need more office space. How's that for an answer? You know, when, when the city bought the land, I mean, we really did look at the future land use plan. We did know that the Indian mounds were north of the creek. We know that the creek was very important to city council as far as maintaining it because there are caves and falls back there. We've done a lot of work surveying the site. When we bought the site furthest to the west, it was to make a bigger office site, but truly, we were going back to the community plan. And the whole reason why we built Emerald Parkway in the beginning was to create an artery for office space. And I can give you all the statistics too on office if you want it.
Well, you know, I know there's 1,000 acres in the western division too, but I, it just seems like this is such a precious part of the city along the river, kind of a gateway at Riverside Drive and Emerald Parkway. And I know that that's why Emerald Parkway was built, to open up all that for development. But given all this stuff that's there and happen, and happening in the school, it just seems like, I'm just begging the question, is this the right thing to do? So I'm, I'm actually posing that to the, to my fellow commissioners.
I would also like to remind you that 270 is right there. So it's, although it's a very pretty site, it's not quiet.
I, I have a question also. I was gonna, I can't believe it, I was gonna ask the same thing. That's why I laughed. My understanding, when, when Emerald Parkway went in, okay, and we were gonna get, put office there because of exposure to 270. But the, the, the plan, as I remember it, and I was there, was Emerald Parkway was going to be limited access, okay? That offices, the driveways, now we've already got a couple driveways. We've got a school zone on Emerald Parkway, which we never dreamed we would have, I don't think. Because Emerald Parkway was supposed to be, we kept calling it the mini 270 back then, okay? That it was gonna be another loop and, and it was Emerald, and so I, I, the way this looks to me is the only access you're gonna have is you're not gonna go through the park and, and Riverside Drive. So you're gonna access, with offices, you're gonna access Emerald Parkway, obviously, right?
There'll, it will be a shared driveway with the park.
But there'll be another driveway. Or will be shared with the park?
It will be shared. There will not be another curb cut.
So there won't be access on the Emerald Parkway?
No, the, the slope there would require too much blasting and you'd lose a whole lot of the acreage.
That's good news.
We created another curb cut, so it would share with the park. And because of the limited acreage on the site, we know that as we've space planned it, nothing more than 50,000 square feet will fit on this site. So when we're marketing it, we are looking for those small office users that want 50,000 square feet or less, because that's all that we know can fit there and can make the site work, can make the curb cut work, can make the traffic work. So like the community plan showed with the smaller office, that's what we're planning to market the site for.
Okay. Times have changed since that was zoned, you know? But if, you know better than I do, I guess, but, so there, I'm happy to hear there's no access on, on the, okay.
It's interesting. How many stories do you think this office building would be?
No more than two. And that was something that we agreed with the residents to the east.
How many stories, I'm sorry?
Two.
No more than two.
More than two.
How much of the site do you think that it would, a 50,000 square foot building would take up of that nine acres?
We did a space planning exercise.
The lot, the lot.
Maximum lot coverage is 70%.
That doesn't include parking?
Yeah, it does.
Would include parking.
Yeah.
Lot coverage includes.
So here's, you know, I, I think Mr. Way brings up something really, really important here. For one, the, the stream, I guess that any development here, if you have development, has to be extremely sensitive because if the area, and the future community plan calls for all the area to the north to be parked and open space, not to be developed, is that correct? That's the future community plan? This stream bed is quite historical, and if we ever, and one of the things the community plan asked for is pedestrian connectivity from Riverside Drive along that stream bed to the park, back and forth, all through there. So, you know, if, if this is rezoned, it's so important to understand that the sensitivity of the site has to be preserved, that it's, in other words, it would almost be as if, I guess I'm, I understand that, uh, a commercial property wants to be seen, but this almost asked for it not to be seen that much, to be, to be sort of cradled by the beautiful landscape around it, instead of it being the focal point, that everything around it is the focal point, and maybe it just cradles in there somehow. He brings up a really interesting point. He does.
So what's interesting about, about your comment is that, that over the years, the couple of projects that had some interest in going on this site did want the buildings to push further to the west and kind of hug a lot of the landscaping. Think, you know, law firms, something stately looking, that wanted to have great views and access to parkland for their employees. So that is something where, those are the types of users that do want this site. The beauty of this site being a city-owned property is that the only way the city can get rid of it is if we take an economic development agreement to city council. So any end user here is going to go through a whole lot of vetting on several different levels before we would even entertain selling or giving away or incentivizing any of this
I just, I can make one other comment, because this is kind of near and dear to me, this Emerald Parkway. When it was developed, the idea was not to have access on Emerald Parkway, which we already do. We had Cardinal was the only thing. And then also that the buildings would be tall, okay, and sit back so they'd have visibility to 270. That was the, why the land was considered so valuable and, and, and the city wanted to own the land or distribute it to, to corporate headquarters, so to speak. So I, I, I was amazed because I was, with Mr. Way talking, I, I was gonna push my mic and say that before he did, that, that now things have really changed and, and this is such a sensitive area here and, and, you know, I think we have to really study that and, you know, make, make a decision.
Yeah, I think we anticipated that from, from Riverside Drive, taking Emerald Parkway all the way up to where it turns to Bright, the height would scale up as you got closer to Sawmill Road.
Right.
So, and again, in the community plan, this area showed smaller one, two-story office, and then it scales up as it gets away from this residential. So this site and, and the school only being two stories, kind of on either side of the neighborhood there, everything east of the school is going to be taller.
But is suburban office institutional coded to be only two stories here? Or is it simply that, that's what the community plan asked?
No, it's, it's how we've space planned it, and it's what we have previously discussed with the neighborhood. We, at one point, brought a, a project forward that ended up fizzling out, and it was a three-story building, and the neighborhood did not want a three-story building. So we said going forward, we would space plan it accordingly to be a two-story building and park it accordingly.
Is there a question on that? Right, so there's a certain agreement with the neighborhood, I guess I'm going to, are we headlong towards, this happens to be the city, but heaven forbid, right, we do this, this sits around for a bit, then we decide to sell it, right? Is, are we headlong towards a PUD for this parcel that stipulates limits like that?
I mean, currently, as it's proposed, it's not. It's meant to be a standard district. So and again, we're very much communicating with the neighborhood and making sure that we're on the same page with them. So I think we would, as always, engage as part of any processes coming forward, because council would want to know that as well.
Right, yeah. And being, being a city-owned site, we, we have ultimate control with who the end user is going to be here.
Also, as Ms. Gilger noted before, any economic development agreement, whether that be a sale or a lease of the property, however that's structured, would have to, again, come before council. And because it would be council acting not, in that circumstance, because council would be acting as the property owner, it has a lot more leeway to impose restrictions or other.
Deed restrictions?
Well, I don't know that we would necessarily do this deed restrictions, it would depend on the specifics, but there are not the considerations of due process that are in play with our zoning authority when we're talking about our proprietary authority as a city.
Got it.
If the council, if this commission has concerns about the sensitivity of the spot in, in, in our recommendations or in our vote on the final, on the plat, on the preliminary plat, what, what would be our, our methods of, of being sure the council knew those, knew those concerns concerning going forward? Because I think that's the hesitancy here, feeling the sense of concern about the sensitivity of the area.
Well, I think certainly it would be reflected, this discussion is going to be reflected in the history that council will be provided of the application. Council, you know, there, as I understand it, there is an able representative of the commission who sits on council, who can relay those concerns. It is.
I was just gonna say.
It is.
I was just saying, as long as you're on.
The, the one thing that I would say is because the commission is a recommending body on rezoning such as this, if the commission were to put conditions or something on its recommendation and council were to have disagreement with those conditions or feel they were too restrictive, under our charter, it would take five votes of council to remove that condition recommended by the commission. So I would just give that word of information, just as you consider how to relay any concerns you have, that, that that supermajority requirement would kick in if you have a condition that council may ultimately disagree with.
So there's, I guess, I, how about this? There's unease, right, let's agree on that. I, I also think there are, to your point, was it Colleen? Forgive me, Colleen. Pleasure. There, there are multiple. there are multiple forthcoming steps, right, to again bump into that unease and again to potentially assuage it or, or have that unease sort of, you know what I mean, again stop us in our tracks. To your point, Jane, there's a certain amount of, I'm, I'm at a point where, provided we articulate our unease, I'm not averse to what's being asked here and then accept that we have multiple stages to, again, resurface that, contend with it if we, if we need to.
I would offer that there's a higher community purpose for this piece of land than what's being put before us today. And I'd like that perhaps discussed or explored before we just jump into this. I'd also point out that the Arts Council is across the street and could this be something arts-related in addition to the historic nature of it? And I, just putting that out there.
I don't, how about this, I don't, I don't personally disagree with you at all. I, I think this, this parcel could be something remarkable for the city. I don't know that suburban office is necessarily it, but that possibility, this vote doesn't necessarily stop that possibility either.
I was just, and I could be wrong, so, but I'm trying to connect some dots here. So I'll ask Colleen the question. I would presume that the reason that we are rezoning to suburban office at this point is to aid the city in marketing this property, but that the suburban office may not necessarily be its final zoning destiny once a suitor is selected by the city. Is that also a fair assumption?
That is fair, although that is the use that we're thinking is the best fit.
Right. But it is entirely possible, not guaranteed, but possible, that in addition to an economic development agreement that would go through council, that may tie some strings, you know, attach some strings to whatever might be planned, it could be that the eventual user of this property would come back through this body seeking some kind of PUD type of designation. Possible, but not guaranteed. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is possible.
So, so what I'm, what I'm just trying to convey and hopefully assuage some of the concerns of the commission is that this is not the last word on how the site is going to be used ultimately. It is the first word.
But if we just left it, its current zoning and that conversation also took place, couldn't that happen? That it's some other use other than office?
Well, it's, it's current zoning, of course, is residential and in the future land use plan, it's the office use. So other than reopening the conversation about the future land use plan, and maybe that's what you're suggesting with respect to this particular site, but, you know, I believe that the reason that this application has been submitted is that it's the city administration's perspective that that conversation has been resolved.
And yes, that was my direction was that perhaps the land use plan is wrong and we should reconsider that, or somebody should.
Can I ask a question about process? The city purchased this land and presumably made a determination what the highest and best use would be for the city with economic development's input, no doubt. We're not asked, it's, it's not our purview necessarily to rubber stamp, but if we substitute our judgment, which we're free to do, there is a process that, right, that this, the city could take this to zoning appeal and from there, take it to council and it would be done, the end result would be the same because council, this is, this presumably is what council wants.
Well, because this is a legislative decision, changing the zoning, rezoning this property, as well as a legislative decision with regard to approving a plat, it's going to council for a final decision regardless.
Okay.
This body is a recommending body with respect to both the plat and the-
So it's even a clearer path. So we could register if we want what we feel is the better use for this, but it's, you know, it's, it's not ours to say in the end, it is just a recommendation.
That is correct.
And I would say, just as a straw vote, that I think the, I approve the application.
I just want to reassure the commissioners of something I think is really important, that, that the Planning and Zoning Commission is the citizens' commission. It's the citizens' opinion of what they believe comes before them that they would like to see developed. They recommend then to the council what their thoughts are. So if, you know, if you disagree, and then council hears it that way, and if you agree, then council hears it that way. And I think you should feel free and not pressured by the worry that it's going to turn out some way anyway, because if you don't say what you feel, they'll never know. So I, you know, I feel, I feel that's important for you to know because you're not just a rubber stamp. You, your opinions make a difference. You are the citizens who live here and council doesn't always, I mean, there are, there are varying opinions about certain things and I think it's important for the commission, for the council to hear these very honest opinions.
Are we, are we ready for a vote?
I have a public comment.
Public comment? Oh, forgive me.
She didn't, she didn't give the oath, she came on.
Oh, forgive me, I gotta, I gotta swear you in. Real quick, let me find my, thank you, Leo. All right. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please stand and raise your right hand. Answering the affirmative, do you swear to, swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. Name, name and address, please.
My name is Linda Paulson and I live at 4158 Bright Road. My husband and I just recently moved to Dublin and, from Houston, and we're very happy that we did. I didn't expect to be here quite this late with you guys tonight, but I've learned a lot, so that's a good thing. And one of the things I think I've learned the most is that you are very thorough and you are looking at every little detail and I hope that you look at the same detail when it comes to green space, because I think it's easy to look at business as tax revenue and as progress, and it is. And I have nothing against business. And I don't know Dublin as well as you do and maybe you do need a lot of corporate or more business space, but I would ask you to consider very carefully what I think I heard Mr. Way saying and Ms. Fox, that this, and others, that this parcel is special. And not just because I live down the road, but it's special to Dublin. And I would ask that you do what Ms. Fox talked about, which is give your voice to council and let them know that this is a special green space, that there is lots of space for more business. And also, just from the standpoint of this particular area, it doesn't sound to me like there are going to be, there's going to be a lot of business space to be able to be created there anyway. If you know the area at all, the parking lot's very, very little already. It's probably 20 cars or less for people who want to go to the park. Put a business in there and you're going to have people from the business parking in those parking spaces too, especially if you're going to access it through that parking lot. I just don't think it's the best use of land for business. I think it's a wonderful, beautiful use of land for green space for Dublin and I would just ask you to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have additional comment in the coffers? Is there more to say or are we at a point where we're voting? So I have, I have three motions. If they, sad if, do they all cascade? If, if one doesn't, if the first one does, is a no, do we continue down the path?
I mean, the approval of the plat does not necessarily hinge upon the recommendation of the approval of the rezoning.
Got it. So motion one is a motion to approve rezoning.
So move. Second.
Mr. Fishman?
I'll say, oh, this is a tough one.
Can you turn your mic on, Warren?
He has a mic too.
Mr. Way?
No.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
I choose to abstain because I feel like this is something that has to be a citizen's opinion and I will have a final vote on this.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Motion to, what's that?
Did it pass?
No, motion didn't carry.
Right, there were, there were not, there was not a majority in the affirmative for the motion, so the motion failed. So there's not a recommendation of approval that would go to council.
Yes. Motion to approve the preliminary plat, do I need two votes here? Two separate votes on this one now, on the plat?
Right, one, one for approval of preliminary plat and one for approval of final plat with condition.
Got it. Motion to approve, I need a motion to approve preliminary plat.
So move. Second.
Ms. Beal?
Mr. Way?
No.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Ms. Fox?
I choose to abstain.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to, need a motion to approve final plat?
So move. Second.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the final plat?
No.
Yes.
Abstain.
It's after 10:30, do we keep going?
All right, so we, by the rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we do not hear new items after 10:30 that can be waived by a vote of five to suspend the rules. So if there's a motion to suspend the rules to allow the final items to move forward this evening, then we will move forward with those.
It's, it's a short presentation. It's not very long. It's, it's just an introduction of the topic.
The presentation's not the problem, the, the conversation is.
Okay, that's fine, that's fair. You don't actually have to say really hardly anything.
What are we, what are we walking into here on our side?
I mean, we could, if you want, I mean, our agenda's also, is full as well, so, I mean, we can, we're going to spend more time talking about it than actually hearing-
Temperature check looks like it's a, it's a no, there's a lot of, yeah.
Okay, that's fair. We'll, we'll pick a different agenda then.
Forgive us. Forgive us, Sarah. Communications?
So I think there's a couple of things, maybe I'll let Nikki talk through some of them because I messed them up last time, so.
No worries. Thanks everyone for your time this evening. So a couple of things that were identified in the email that went out with your chair agenda, we had mentioned at our last meeting that we're looking to schedule a second meeting, a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission in November to accommodate our caseload. The date we had asked everyone to check their calendars for is Tuesday, November 16th. So I guess looking to affirm this evening, that's an acceptable date that we'll have quorum for.
I'm good.
So in terms of a special meeting, we have to vote to schedule a special meeting? And we, we do need quorum, so if, I'm hearing, at least two of you will be available. Is anyone else available?
I'm available.
I'm available. So motion, motion to approve special meeting?
Yeah, yeah, motion to set a special meeting for November 16th.
Second.
I don't know, can I make the motion?
Yes.
All right, done. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Snare? Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Really appreciate everyone accommodating that in their schedule. I know everyone's incredibly busy. Couple other administrative items to take care of, as previously mentioned, our December meeting, which was originally scheduled for December 9th, Thursday, December 9th, the clerk's office has requested that that meeting be rescheduled to Wednesday, December 8th. That's due to a special event happening here at City Hall. So just to memorialize that, also requesting a motion this evening to reschedule the Thursday, December 9th meeting to Wednesday, December 8th.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
What is this for?
December 8th, maybe, can you be here?
We already have that in our calendar.
Why is it already on my schedule?
Yeah.
It's a hold, so it's something we knew that was going to happen, we're just asking for the commission to affirm it.
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
16th, December 8th. So we've got December 8th and November 16th.
You got it. Only three more meetings this year, or four, sorry, four. It's just whizzing by. Okay, one final request. There is an application, as mentioned in my email earlier today, that's scheduled to be before you at your November 4th meeting. That's the meeting after next. It's an application that was originally heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in June- by the Planning and Zoning Commission in January of 2020. It's a proposal within the Bright Road area for senior housing. This site has a number of natural features and is significantly wooded. In conversations between the city and the proposed developer, they've requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission visit the site to see the natural features, to potentially feel better equipped, to provide direction on a revised concept plan. So, the concept plan and the PUD process really is structured more like an informal review. So, you'll be able to provide feedback. This was also before you as a concept plan, but having just a greater depth and breadth of understanding, we wanted to offer that to you. I had proposed a couple of dates in October in my email earlier today. That being said, I think we've had, who is not checking their email? Everyone? Okay, just me. So, I can also send that to your personal email if it's better for you guys. That being said, Jenny and myself have had additional conversations and, right, are very concerned about leaves coming off of trees and just chilling of the weather. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that you only have to provide 24 hours notice to schedule a special meeting. So, we are not proposing that you meet us tomorrow. But that we look at a date in the next week or two during lunch where we could meet on the site.
Where's the site?
It's at the intersection of Emerald Parkway and Bright Road, the northeast corner.
Do you have, are the, are the drawings, are, are there preliminary, or is the concept planned on the website or on OneDrive so that we can see it and as we walk it, we can put these images together?
Yes, so you will have, I've linked you to the previous 2020 concept plan in your email. The proposed concept plan for this upcoming meeting has not been officially finalized yet, but will be finalized no later than the end of the day Monday. So, that will get posted. And we'll, of course, bring also physical copies for you to look at as we walk the site.
That's important. Thank you.
Are we doing this as a group? Okay. Now, what's the date?
We'll send you an email with some opportunities to do this at lunch.
Yeah, you think 24-hour notice? That sounds like an eviction.
Well, if we had talked about it earlier, we'd be fine. Now.
Do we have a meeting next Thursday? Geez.
Yes.
Should we just stay overnight?
You should.
Mark, you're down to about $6 an hour now.
When did you get a raise?
Thanks so much for hanging in there. That's all we got.
Likewise, thank you all. Are we adjourned?
We're adjourned.
Do I have to, do I have to bang the gavel?
Yeah, bang the gavel.
Oh, I got it.